Tuesday, February, sorry, March 10th. The Board has met in closed session and we are now returning to regular session. And we will begin with C1, the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have Spanish translation available.
We have Vivien Rodriguez with us tonight.
Si, buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la Junta Directiva del Distrito Escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias.
Thank you. And we do have headsets for the hearing impaired available. Please notify us if you need that. And with that, we'll move on to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Well, we do have an introduction. Rick Nargy is with us tonight. Rick, where'd you go? There you go. Rick, would you please come up to the podium for just a moment? Let me talk about you for just a moment. I am pleased to introduce to the Board Rick Nargy. Rick Nargy is working with us as the interim co-director of Special Education along with Alan Hilton. He'll be sharing responsibilities with Alan. Rick completed a 37-year career in public education. The first 13 years were as a school psychologist and the following 24 years were as a director of pupil personnel services and special education in the Ventura Unified School District. Rick just started yesterday. And he will be with us until the end of May. So, Board, I'm pleased to introduce to you Rick Nargy.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's certainly my pleasure to be here, having just returned from a couple of months in Idaho. I'm getting used to being back in Southern California, but I'm really looking forward to the experience and putting in the time here and doing what I can do for the district. So, I thank you for the opportunity to serve with you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to have both you and Dr. Hilton on board.
Good. Very good. And tonight, I'm proud to introduce Mike Vale, the principal of Cleveland Elementary School. Mike will be introducing Cleveland's Crescendo Arts Program. Mike?
Good evening. Thank you for letting us be here. It is, and I want to thank the parents for letting students from Cleveland be here tonight in a long day and then go out and go dancing at night. That's a good thing to do. That's a good thing. At Cleveland School, we believe that a comprehensive education includes the arts, that the arts are not an add-on, they're not a second thing, shouldn't, they can be at any time of the day, they don't have to be at the end of the day, they can really be a part of the child's overall education. To that, we have, we are very thankful for the support that our school district has given us in providing arts education to our students. We're also very thankful for many, many organizations here in the community and across the country that have supported arts at Cleveland School as well. We have a comprehensive, we have a grade four through six music program currently. We have five teachers that teach instrumental music to students at Cleveland School. We have two dance teachers at Cleveland School, two visual arts teachers as well, and we have a drama instructor. Tonight, we have a group of students, we call our program Crescendo. So, tonight, we have a group of dancers led by Ms. Trudy Olson. They are going to be presenting two short little songs in a very short, small, little space. We're very proud of them. We know they're nervous, but not so nervous. They just performed at the Villa Santa Barbara here in town this past week. My great aunt loved them, and so did the other people there. And I have the job of pushing the right button on this machine, so without further, yes, come on up here and let me, let's let Trudy tell you the music that they're going to present.
Okay. We're going to perform, oh, yes. Okay. So, tonight, we'll be performing a swing number for you to a song called "Rhythm," and then a merengue number. And this is a small, just a small portion of the children that I teach at Cleveland School. Okay, ready?
(singing) Rhythm, when you swing it. Rhythm, rock and roll. Rhythm, got to sing it. That's the stuff that sends my soul. Rhythm, body action. Rhythm, feels so fine. Rhythm, groove attraction. El truco's right on time. More than just a melody motion, like a group of kinda attitude. Your body's making to the end to mopey. When we're minding boyfriends, it's hot now. It's gotta be, shoot, hey, dance. Got to move, they got chicken in the line. Hear what your heart is, hear the drumming, drumming. Rhythm, we're a team, bring us on. Rhythm, midnight hour. Rhythm, wake up, babe. Rhythm, rip and power. Vow to blow your blues away. Rhythm, shout and feel it. Rhythm, all around. Rhythm, jump and swivel. That's the way to go to town. Da lu da, da lu da da. Da lu da, da lu da da. Da lu da, da lu da da. Ooh wah, ooh wah wah. Da lu da, da lu da da. Da lu da, da lu da da. Da lu da, da lu da da. Ooh wah, ooh wah wah. Da lu da, da lu da da. Da lu da, da lu da da. Da lu da, da lu da da. Oh, that's a day. Rhythm, rock and roll. Rhythm, got to sing it. That's the stuff that sends my soul. Rhythm, body action. Rhythm, feels so fine. Rhythm.
They're going to do one more dance merengue for you right now. I want to make sure you know that there are 40 students currently taking dance classes at Cleveland School. So, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the community also for their support through the parcel tax in increasing what we're going to be able to offer this coming year in the arts.
Which button?
The big one.
The big one.
(laughing)
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 I think it's the wrong button.
I think that was the wrong button.
Okay. We're ready.
(laughing)
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 I think that was the wrong button.
Okay. We're ready.
(laughing)
(laughing)
(singing)
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 So, we thank you for this opportunity. We hope you'll come up to Cleveland Schools Mondays and Fridays for dance, but you can see violins as well, saxophones, lots of things going on. Thank you.
It's so fun. Thank you, students, and that was wonderful. And Mrs. Cordero?
I was just going to say, Mrs. Deacon and I want to know if we can bring our husbands and practice with them. (laughing)
If you can get them to do it. You say it's a lot of fun.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Good. Shall I go ahead with superintendent's report?
Yes, superintendent's report.
Well, I'd like to report to you that this last week, a number of us, including teams from a number of our schools, spent two days last week working with Austin Buffum, nationally-known professional in learning communities, and working on PLCs in response to intervention, as well as with Anthony Muhammad, also very well-known on professional learning communities and school culture. This is part of our emphasis for the last four years on how we jointly take responsibility to see that every student learns. Anthony Muhammad will be returning in August at our first pre-service day, our first teacher-in-service day, and we'll be inviting the Board to hear him on that day. Last week, Galita Valley Junior High's Daniel Gay won the Junior High County Spelling Bee. And you know the word that he won with? Can you spell it? Lacalina Junior High's Brenna Hensley took second place. Both students represented Santa Barbara County at the state level of competition yesterday. So, we'll find out how well they did. At Saturday's Mesa Competition at UC Santa Barbara, students from our secondary schools participated in a number of events: egg drop, catapult, geometry, math quest, crystal growing, and other activities. Not all the results are in, so we'll get you the results when we do have them fully, but we have learned that La Cumbre Junior High's Joseph Spicer took first place in the individual competition of geometry, math quest, and Sandy Campbell and Elizabeth Medina won first place in crystals. Yesterday and today, Franklin Elementary School was the site of a unique, school-wide cooking event under the direction of chef educator Andrea Martin. Sponsored by the Orphela Fund's School Food Initiative, the children prepared and cooked from scratch a recipe using seasonal, locally grown vegetables. Inspired by the popular Grimm Brothers' tale in which strangers with a pot of water trick villagers into contributing items to improve the flavors imparted by a stone, the children created, yes, their own stone soup. And it was quite an event. They prepared it yesterday and ate today. It was a wonderful experience for the students, and the principal, Casey Kilgore, is looking forward to working collaboratively with the Orphela Fund's School Food Initiative. My office regularly issues a report to the Board called the Board Brief. It's a collection of reports and news articles and articles on district matters. A copy of the February 27 Board Brief is on display in the reception area, or it can be provided through the superintendent's office. Upcoming events, Board members, you have a couple flyers on upcoming events. Our secondary school spring theater performances will begin this week, and copies of our Theater Fest 2009 flyer are located also in the back of the room. The Grandparent Show is on display at the Faulkner Gallery. It showcases artwork by many of our secondary school students. The exhibit runs through March 25 to March 25. Galita Valley Junior High's beginning an advanced band concert to take place March 19, and their orchestra and jazz ensemble concert will happen on March 26. La Cuesta Continuation High School and the Santa Barbara Museum of Art are working collaboratively on the iconic portrait project. The work will be on display from March 27 through April 10 in both the museum store windows and in the museum. Look particularly in the elevator at the museum. Sadly, one of our employees passed away on March 1. Victor Hart was a classified employee who worked as a school program liaison in the Bridges Program at San Marcos High School, and he will be missed. And that is tonight's superintendent's report.
Thank you. And it looks like we have a student report. Is this published?
Public comments?
We're not there yet.
On the superintendent's?
We actually take public comment on the superintendent's report during C3, public comments.
Let me comment on the, not yet, Kate. Let me comment on the student report. In the first meeting of each month, we have a student report. Tonight, we welcome ASB President Blas Uribey and ASB Representative Greg Cruz. Did I get that right, Greg, this time? Okay, from Dos Pueblos High School.
Thank you.
You're welcome to butt in at any time. Well, good afternoon, excuse me, good evening, everybody. It's, I guess it's evening, not used to daylight savings time right now. But, um, good evening, everybody. My name is Greg Cruz. Once again, I'm the ASB representative, and this is Blas Uribey, the ASB president for Dos Pueblos High School, the class of 2009. Over the last couple of months, since we haven't seen you guys, DP has been full of accomplishments, especially in the last two weeks. Our CIF girls water polo team just won the Southern Section CIF Championship over Corona del Mar, three to two, a couple of weeks ago. This marks their second in a row CIF championship, and it's a great feat, especially for such a young team. And we're very excited, especially heading the team is Sammy Hill, who is ranked number two in the nation as a goalkeeper for water polo. So, that's something really to look forward to in the future. Our robotics team just finished their robot. It took six weeks to build a robot. They're in competition on Wednesday and competition next week as well. They hope to further their tradition of excellence, which even though it hasn't been a very long tradition, they got to Nationals last year and placed eighth. So, something to look forward to also. And if you want to, if you want to know how hard they worked, over the last six weeks, I've had numerous friends who've been telling me how hard it is. They, they work from 3:00 PM to sometimes all night, every single day, no days off, especially the last few days, and they really busted their butt to get to where they are. So, congrats on them. The DP Jazz Choir also took first place in a regional contest. Congrats to them. The Virtual Enterprise Team, which is a newly formed, a newly formed team this year, took first in a regional tournament once more, and it's really going great for those guys. It's headed by one of our well-known teachers, Mr. Yamahata, and it's, from what I've, from what I've been hearing, it's been going great over there. And finally, our Dos Pueblos Mock Trial Team won the county competition against San Marcos. Kudos to San Marcos High School and the DP Mock Trial Team. I myself am an attorney for the Mock Trial Team, and I know how hard it takes to get to where we are, and I know that San Marcos also did a great job, so kudos to them. The DP Mock Trial Team will be competing at the state competition from March 19 to the 21st. So, upcoming events, Annie is playing this weekend and next weekend. It is Dos Pueblos's spring play. It is headed by our teacher, Mr. Sayer. If you're, if you're interested in going to this, it is $12 for adults and $10 for The Sadie Hawkins Dance for Dos Pueblos Students is next week, and our tradition of the Grease Pole, which is a student-based competition where you try to send a, what, 30 to 50-foot pole, is also next week, so we're looking forward to that. Finally, a recap of the last month, we had Decades Week, and we had our Leadership Air Bands, which is also a fun little event that's a mock parody of all the recent and current songs that we perform at, which is great. And that's about it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. A great update. We will now move on to C2, the announcement of closed session action. There are two things to report out. On item B4, public employee discipline dismissal release, it was moved by Noel and seconded by Cordero that the Board ratify the non-reemployment of six probationary certificated employees, and that passed 5-0. And then on item B5, it was moved by Cordero and seconded by Deacon to approve the Casey waivers for the list of qualified students. And with that, we'll move on to C3, public comments.
And the vote on that?
Sorry, that was 5-0.
5-0.
I wanted to talk about the closed session items and topics as they relate to the Board.
You can certainly do that during public comment. Public comment is a time to talk about anything that's not on the action or the conference agenda, but is under the jurisdiction of the Board. So, who do we have for public comment?
We have public comment, we have three requests for three different of the topics by Mrs. Smith. So, you really have, under public comment, you have three minutes to talk about any of the items you want to talk about, Mrs. Smith.
Or you can do one minute each, whichever you prefer.
Well, that's an effective way to silence public comments. As far as I know, the Brown Act says that we have time to talk about each agenda item. So, I wanted to talk about the closed session topics. They violate the Brown Act. There has to be an indication of how many and whose Casey waivers you are wavering, because something is sent to the parent to say your child is being Casey waivered, and then it has to reflect on the agenda to say, and it's going to be discussed now, and if you want to, you know, deal with that, come now. Same with the topic about litigation. And I did file a Brown Act violation against this district in 1998, and I was found to be right. You are out of compliance with the Brown Act when you don't list what litigation you're talking about. The people who are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to sue for their educational rights want to know when you're talking. Every issue you have listed leaves out very important information for the public. It is a Brown Act violation, and I don't appreciate your silencing me when I wanted to talk to you at the public comments for closed session topics. Now, you're making me take my time, to which I wrote, I wanted to talk about the Board Brief. He said that FICMAT was going to go to CELPA, CELPA, and evaluate CELPA. Did you know that CELPA is having Jack Lucas with, you know, tens of thousands of public dollars evaluating CELPA? Why don't you have FICMAT talk to Jack Lucas? Also, have FICMAT talk to Jim Helmsley, who was the director of this CELPA after Marcia McClish retired. I can't talk about the CELPA. I wanted to talk about the fact that the CELPA CAC, hello, I wanted to talk about in public comments, I am your parent rep. The CAC is defunct. They have not had a quorum since we started meeting. There is going to be a meeting on March 17. We're going to have two autism specialists, and I want people to know about that. But last meeting, Joan and Les Esposito came with a special ed lawyer.
Do you second, Mrs. Smith?
They outnumbered the people, the representatives. It is defunct. So, I wanted to talk about the fact that there is no complaint procedure against personnel. I have sent 12 letters to this Board. I have tried to complain about Brian Sarvis. He illegally disqualified me from the ballot. Then he stopped me from talking on the agenda. I wanted the title Complaints About Brian Sarvis. He wanted Board Brief letters. He wrote letters, he sent it to the media, the media put it on the web, and he's looking very confused. I will send you the link that Rob Kuznia put your letter on the web. Now, there is no complaint procedure. I know, but I had put in three requests.
I should have had nine minutes to talk about the very important. Thank you.
I would like to make a comment, Mrs. Smith. I will ask, it's on. I will ask our attorney to give a response to your questions, to me on closed session questions. The FICMAT people are here, so they heard your message about CELPA, and I believe there's a complaint process, but I'll find out what it is. I think it's just a matter of putting in writing what your complaint is.
I have put in writing.
Thank you. All right.
Closed letters.
C4, acceptance of donations.
Move to approve with appreciation?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. And then the consent agenda. Any items to be pulled? Dr. Noel?
Madam President, I'd like to pull D4 and D10.
D4 and D10. Mrs. Deacon? D8, please.
And 5 and D6, the settlement agreement on the general fund?
That was your time during public comment, remember? That was?
No, no, that's to pull those items.
No, members of the public don't pull items. It's only?
It used to be you would pull the consent items, and then we'd talk about it at the end of the meeting.
The protocol is to talk about consent items during public comment.
And when did you change that?
Gosh, a couple of months ago? In terms of?
November, I believe.
November? In terms of the public comment portion of it.
Move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
So, I would have only been able to talk about it within my three minutes?
Of public comment. Is there a second on this one?
Second, and you know, I just realized I accidentally pulled D8.
And instead, you want to?
I intended to pull the school site plans, but that's not a consent item.
That's not a consent.
I would like to pull D8 then also.
Oh, you would like to pull that? Okay.
There are, there is a public comment on D8 and D7, and I would hate to make the gentleman wait till 10 o'clock at night to talk about them, so if it's appropriate.
Well, that person should have spoken during public comment when it was not conference and agenda, and I cannot reopen that at this time, I'm afraid.
Somebody's making mistakes here.
It's going to be, it's going to be open for discussion.
Oh, right, well, D8 is, but not D7. So, if the person wants to speak on D7, I mean, on D8, if we want to discuss D8 quickly right now, is that to the pleasure of the Board?
Three minutes for?
Can, can we call the question on the, on the original motion first?
Is there a second on calling the question?
Do we need a second on calling?
Yeah. Yes, all right.
Because D8 is not included in the motion.
Right, but calling the question, it actually requires a second and a Board majority to call the question. We have not done that in practice before, but that is actually Robert's rules. So, we can go ahead and just take the vote without calling the question. I'm willing to do that at this point. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes, it passes unanimously, except for those three items that were pulled. So, does it please the Board to go ahead and take D8 right now?
Yes.
Sure.
All right. Let's discuss D8, approval to send notice of release to temporary teachers effective end of 2008, 2009 school year. And?
I'm going to ask Christine Robertson to present this.
Yes, Dr. Robertson, come on up. Shall we take public comment before we talk about it?
I think we should get the presentation.
Well, there's not an actual presentation. This was on the consent agenda.
What is your preference? Would you like Chris to introduce this?
Sure, let's go ahead and do that.
Just give us a brief introduction.
D8 is an item that was presented to the Board for approval regarding sending notices to release.
to release of temporary teachers per ed code, that these teachers need to be notified by March 15th, that they will be released for, at the end of the school year, and may not be employed for the '09-10 school years.
The reason I asked for it to be pulled is, number one, we're talking about 125 people here, and doing it on a consent calendar just seems to be sort of cold. It's a lot of teachers, and I know that one of the, one of the people on this Board campaigned on trying to be more humane in this process. And at, at 70,000 a teacher, that's a lot of savings, and why do we need that much at this time?
Ed code stipulates that they all must be released. I don't have a choice in picking and choosing on the temporary teachers. By law, they must receive a notice of being released.
Perhaps, let me ask Dr. Robertson, perhaps you can define why we have temporary teachers, and why would they not, say, probationary or permanent?
In many cases over the years, the temporary teachers are either replacing teachers who are on a leave of absence, have other situations which they may be gone for a period of time, maternity leaves, professional leaves, sabbatical leaves. We have teachers who do not work full-time, and therefore, a percentage of the position are the 1.0 that they don't work, has to be filled by a temporary employee because the teacher has a right, permanent teacher has a right to a full-time teaching position. That has added up over the years, and between secondary and elementary teacher, teachers we employ that many temporaries. Categorical funds are considered soft money, therefore, temporary teachers are generally hired because of that. Those monies can go away at any given time, and we have, we would have to deal with that if we didn't have the funding by which to pay for those teachers.
And how many historically get hired back?
In the past, Mr. Heron, we've been able to do almost all. This is a totally different year. I can't even venture to guess.
Mrs. Deacon?
This is an area that I do have a lot of concern about, and I understand that this is a unique year in many ways, because now we're waiting until the ballot and the election in, in May to find out actually how much money we may have, and so that's why it's happening this year. But I would just like to say, and I think other Board members may share this feeling, that it's my hope, my great hope, that in the future, we can move away from, from noticing so many temporary teachers when historically, the vast majority of them have been rehired. And I know going forward, that may or may not be the case, but certainly, we can develop some data that allows us to make projections about how many we really may be able to bring back and therefore, limit those that we're noticing. And I understand the legal, you know, necessities of having to notice not just a few, but all, depending on the dates that they're hired. The other thing that concerns me is that so many of these teachers have been here for a long time. I mean, I learned just recently, as many as, you know, eight to 10 years they've been temporary teachers, and so I, I really think it's time to look at how we can work in a better way to move some of those people into our tenure track that are valuable, have been here so long. And it's not just the ones that have been here a long time. I mean, we have energetic, enthusiastic, successful teachers who do an awful lot for us, and it's, you know, it's really demoralizing to constantly not know whether you're going to have a job back. And I know I'm kind of preaching to the choir here, but the reality is, is the system, I think, I think we can find different ways to work around this system, and I understand this year is, is an exception perhaps, but I really think as a district, we need to look at ways to fix this problem.
Just in response, SBTA and the district's negotiating team have been talking about this issue for quite a while, and have tried to implement and put some things into place that should be able to help with this process. And like you, this is no pleasure for me to have to present to you. It's a very, very difficult thing.
Dr. Noel?
Just to follow up on Mrs. Deacon's comment, it's a question really, just correct me if I'm wrong. This sounds like this practice would lead to cutting off our new blood and, and aging of our, of our faculty. Is that kind of generally what happens as a result of this?
Well, no, that's, it's a complicated answer.
I was surprised. I didn't realize we had people who were nine, 10 years at that. I thought they were all, only two, two years or less in the district.
This is not probation.
That's, I'm confusing the temporarys with the probation. Okay. I, I, I share a, if it's, if it's a footnote on your concern, I share it, that, that we, I think we need to pay attention to an infusion of new people who have gone through ed school more recently, and therefore, represent more current thinking about education.
Thank you for the feedback.
And we have public comment on this?
We have one public.
No, you have two, because I put in D5 and D6, and if you're going to allow public comment for...
No, Mrs. Smith.
We have public comment on this.
We pulled D8.
We pulled D8.
And we have public comment on this item only, D8.
Thank you, and good to see you, some of you again. First, can I ask, has anybody got a copy of the email that I sent to Dr. Robertson last Friday in your packets tonight? Did that happen with respect to the term, the terminating of the temporary employees and things? All right. Help, my time isn't running too fast on me here.
If you sent it to Board members...
I, I sent it to Dr. Robertson, asked for it to be forwarded, didn't realize that this meeting was literally happening tonight. So, for your packets, I can send that to you, and if there's an official way for me to enter that into your records, I'd like to have that be done if possible. I'd like to roadmap my points for the kids on the mock trial team at Santa Barbara, but I don't have enough time, but I have six things, and that was one of them. Secondly, the reason that I'm here is, at Santa Barbara High School, there, there are really not that many activities for non-actors and non-athletes. If you happen to be an academic at Santa Barbara High School, for a while, it's been weak. There isn't a robot team. That was the most amazing presentation from Dos Pueblos this evening. I'm so proud of that kid. We don't have a robot team. We don't have an, it's academic team. We don't have a competitive debate team, and until two years ago, we were a doormat in the mock trial world. And then Mike Moyer amazingly came to Santa Barbara High School as a temporary teacher. And I just want to speak on behalf of him, and I think now on behalf of many other temporary teachers, but in particular him. In this memo, I, I live on emails. I communicate so much on emails. I amazingly, I am the coach of the mock trial team, the community parent that volunteers with other attorneys in town, Clark Sterling, who doesn't even have a kid at the high school, Alan Morton, who never had been to the high school until the mock trial team. So many judges in our community, so many lawyers in our community are really a part of this event. And to the extent that Santa Barbara can compete with San Marcos and Dos Pueblos and Santinaz and other teams in the county, all the people in this community that volunteer are so much better off. And if you look at any one of those 41 things, I went through my emails of, oh, this is what that topic was, and this is what that topic was, and I'm sure there are more, the time it takes a temporary teacher, who's maybe, I don't know what they make for the after-school activity program, but the time that Mr. Moyer took is, I can't even begin to explain it. There would not be a team next year. There's no one that would do those things, not myself, not any other people. It just takes so much time. And the third point is, is that if it would be at all possible, for any, three of you have spoken up, how this is a pretty brutal process. I would love any one of the three of you just to make a motion, even if it doesn't get seconded, that I will know I've been heard, to not have Mike Moyer's name appear on either D7 or D8. I wasn't aware of that there's a law.
You have had your three minutes.
Well, I, I just want to say that you can't do that, and I, and I understand that. And I'm from Chicago, and Rahm Emanuel, I went to school with him. So, from a practical standpoint, if there's anything that you can do... Can somebody please give me 30 more seconds?
No, we cannot.
If there's anything that you could do to make sure that he ends up back on the rolls, I don't know, and none of the parents that I'm speaking to know how to get a teacher in. Is it the Board? Is it Dr. Robertson? Is it the principal?
Thank you.
If you can do that with Mike Moyer, that would be great.
And it is a conversation for you to have with your principal and with Dr. Robertson.
I, I've tried to talk to principals, Dr. Robertson, and they're suggesting the Board...
And I know that we all know how many wonderful temp teachers there are out there. As we look later in this agenda, we have fantastic long-term teachers as well that we are going to be hitting, I'm afraid, later this evening. It's a devastating evening. So, I am so sorry, and I do appreciate your comments, and I know how important this is to you and to Santa Barbara High School.
If the Board has a room to get someone in a temporary spot next year, that would be great.
I think you heard that hopefully, a lot of those will come back.
Yes, thank you very much.
Board, at the crux of this problem is the, the reason that we have temporary teachers, and that is that we have teachers who go on leave, we have teachers who have partial assignments, and we have to save positions because they have rights back to those positions. To deal with that, we have been very restrictive about teachers going on extended leave, not extended that over a one-year period. Of course, there are a number of reasons that you could go on leave, and in some cases, people do, but we've been very restrictive. We've pulled back on that. We're looking for other ways to be restrictive. It's not easy to do, but we could certainly have a longer discussion. We can put this on the agenda and have a longer discussion of it.
Mrs. Cordero?
I just want to clarify something. The reason we have temporary teachers who have been here for six or eight years, is that because they move from one temporary position to another? Or have they occupied the same? They haven't occupied the same temporary position for eight, six or eight years, have they?
Maybe Mrs. Swawski can share that there are some part-time issues where they're...
Right, there are job share concerns. I believe Dr. Robertson started to talk about that, where something we've been working with our teachers, the union, on is that teachers who have been in job shares over time, and we have lots of job shares in our district. One teacher has to be tenured and backed up with a temporary, but recently, we all agreed with the union that if you have been in a job share and you choose to stay there, you have to resign, give up your, let's say, 50% or 60% or something, so that it's opening up opportunities for other teachers to come in as temporary teachers, probationary.
Yeah, moving on, yeah.
Moving on. And as our elementary district in particular has declined in enrollment, the people who are retired, there's no longer a temporary, a permanent spot there because it left. It went away with the kids, and so we have a lot of temporary teachers that are remaining temporary for that reason, too. So, it's, it's a combination of causes really that have gotten us to this point. I don't know if Dr. Robertson wants to add more, but I know those are two major pieces.
Any other comments or questions? I know that this is not something that makes anybody happy. I do need to have a motion on D8.
I'll so move.
Second, somebody?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. Now, we are moving on to the conference agenda. Normally, we move on to the action agenda. Right now, I do want to point out that we are taking some items from the conference agenda out of order in order to sort of prep us for the action agenda. We are taking F1, LaCuesta Facilities Plan follow-up report and proposals for next stage, and that's largely so they don't have to be here doing it at 10:15 at night. So, with that...
Good. I'll have Robin Swawski, our Associate Superintendent, introduce this item. Did you announce the item?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. As the Board Agenda Memo addresses, this is kind of a continuation of about a year ago when we started the reconfiguration proposal with LaCuesta continuation, and over the summer, we moved the Los Alturas campus down. I know you have the matrix in your, in your handout, so I won't go into detail. We do have Kathy Abney here tonight, as well as Dave Meister from Santa Barbara High School, because one of the pieces that you noticed in the transition from last year was that we started a bridge program with Santa Barbara High School continuation, because those students moved downtown here with the Los Alturas students. So, we have our campus next door, and Kathy Abney, the principal, is going to talk a little bit about how that's going through, and then how we revised the matrix slightly, and how we want to move forward as far as the next step in the reconfiguration. And then Dave Meister will talk just briefly about the program at Santa Barbara High School. So, Kathy Abney, are we waiting for technology here? There we go. Good.
Absolutely. Good evening. Sorry for running in and out. I have a couple of parent groups meeting next door, and they're not all gone, so I was just making sure that they were doing okay. So, I want to just give you a very brief presentation and bring you up to date on where we are. If I can get this thing to work. Okay, well, that would explain why it doesn't work. I was pushing the wrong button. So, we came before you last year and talked about consolidating LaCuesta campuses, and we moved the Santa Barbara High Campus and the Los Alturas Campus together and put them downtown last year, and we're looking at achievement in academics for every student. And it's our goal to provide every student with an engaging educational experience, a safe environment, promoting self-discipline and academic excellence, and a strong school-community partnership, supporting students in becoming resilient, self-sufficient, successful adults contributing responsibly to their community. And we have a master schedule this year for the first time ever, and I get better every six weeks. We change classes every six weeks, so it's, it's an interesting challenge, but it's been a lot of fun. A school culture based on the tenants of tolerance and acceptance, increased efficiency in the delivery of support services. We have our special ed psychologist and resource teacher downtown. We have Career Community Service Fair. We have our first community service and career fair on May 8th, and we have a work ed class for the first time that's actually a real work ed class. Increased access to community resources. We're downtown. We have access to the library. We can walk to field trips. We walk to Sterns Wharf the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, excuse me, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving toward the C Center. Our student daily attendance is up on the downtown campus, and we've had virtually no suspensions or discipline issues downtown. Student attendance, and I, I'll show you the, the matrix next, but I did for the first six months of the school year, last year and this year. So, you see LaCuesta-San Marcos, you see LaCuesta-Dos Pueblos, Los Alturas for last year, LaCuesta-Los Alturas and LaCuesta-Santa Barbara last year. And then you see this year, and it's missing Los Alturas, of course, and then the downtown campus, which is at, and the bars look really impressive, but here's the actual numbers. So, for last year, if you go down to the bottom, 89% at San Marcos, it's up to 91% this year. So, we're a little bit better across the board. 79% at Dos Pueblos last year. This is every kid doing it month by month, and I did it for the first six months. 89% this year. Dos Pueblos is way up. Los Alturas last year was 82%, and Santa Barbara last year was 91%. Those are the two campuses that were combined. And if you recall, Los Alturas is on the La Colina campus, pretty tough for kids to get to by bus. Downtown attendance for the first six months, for all kids enrolled, 94% this year. We're pretty pleased with that. It's still not up there where, you know, you'd like attendance to be, but for continuation kids, that's outstanding attendance. So, we are valuing our students. They're connected to adults, valued for their assets, they're honored and celebrated, and encouraged to become leaders. We have teacher advisors, we have an academic counselor on site, special ed staff, and community resources. Counselor and community outreach coordinator, we have someone who makes phone calls home every day when kids are not at school. Our special ed staff and outside resources can come, you know, right to the site. We have consistent expectations of kids. I have one teacher that was on my San Marcos campus first semester and is downtown this semester. Couple of teachers decided to do a swap, and he keeps telling me how amazed he is. Kids come to class, they want to be in class, nobody's out having to round them up and say, "Hey, it's time to come to class." It's just, it's an amazing phenomenon. We do an intake and screening process for safety, zero tolerance for violence and harassment. Staff is vigilant. I mean, they're standing outside the doors, making sure kids come into class, they're supervised, and it's in an enclosed area. They come in and out the front door. Community resources, we work with Wilderness Youth Project, the Tappus Project, which is yoga in the classroom. Y-Drive brings an employment training program to school. CADA Youth Service Specialists, AHA, the Academy for Healing Arts. Just Communities has done a talking in class, student leadership. We have a marvelous collaborative with the Museum of Art, and in fact, we have two student murals that were painted a cup, over a couple of summers. They're 24 feet long by eight feet high. One is hung in the interior courtyard, and one is on the back wall. And we have a partnership with UCSB where we have four or five tutors every week that come into the classrooms and work with our students in math and English and other subjects. So, moving forward, our professional dedicated staff is committed to the vision of... Our professional dedicated staff is committed to the vision of academic excellence and providing the most appropriate opportunities for all of our students by bringing two additional direct instruction teachers to the downtown campus and maintaining independent study on-site. And I need to tell you, it's included on the matrix. Independent study was supposed to stay at the Santa Barbara High School campus for this year. But if you've been by Santa Barbara High School's lower campus at Nopal Street, where we used to be, they're still under construction. And they couldn't guarantee me that that construction would be taken care of before school started in August. And I'm really glad we made the decision to move them. They've become an integral part of what we do downtown. And so, we did move the independent study folks just because it wasn't feasible to leave them there, and they would have been right smack in the middle of the construction. So, maintaining independent study on-site. La Cuesta is moving toward WASC accreditation next year, 2009-10. Model continuation high school status in 2013-14. You have to get a full WASC visit. You can't just have the preliminary three-year visit. And the same for exemplary independent study program status, the same thing. So, we're going to go next year for WASC accreditation for both our independent study and our continuation program. And eventually, we want to become an educational options magnet for the district, providing academic and career technical programs for those students who don't fit into the traditional mold and are looking for an alternative form of schooling, one that meets their particular needs and makes school exciting and meaningful once again. So, that's our goal. And you can't, I mean, this is, you have this matrix. It's pretty crazy to try to read it. But there it is on PowerPoint mode. I don't know if it's worth trying to put it on. Do you have an Almo there? And do I have a copy of it?
I don't know that it would be that much better.
That wouldn't be much better? So, anyway, so what the matrix really recommends is maintaining a direct instruction program in Galleta. And at one point, we thought that would probably be at Dos Pueblos, but it sounds as if the Dos Pueblos campus is pretty impacted from an attendance standpoint, and that San Marcos is probably, from a housing standpoint, the most logical place to stay. So, at this point, in consultation with Dr. Sarvis and Ms. Sawaski, it sounds like the recommendation would be to leave the Galleta presence on the San Marcos campus and then, and fold the Dos Pueblos campus. We have three classrooms out there right now. And give those over to Dos Pueblos for a similar program to what Santa Barbara High School is running, and bring two teachers downtown. So, we would have six direct instruction teachers plus a resource teacher downtown. So, that's, that's an update. As far as the suspensions, I didn't give you suspension data because we've had a grand total of five suspensions downtown. One for a young lady who had some empty alcohol containers in her purse. And she spent five days sitting in my office doing schoolwork. We have an in-house suspension center, it's my office. And the other four were for students who didn't stay for their after-school detention assignment two days in a row. And so, then they got suspended to my office for the third day. And they spent a day in my office doing schoolwork for five periods. And bored out of their gourd, and they don't, you know, they get lunch, but they have to eat it in my office. And so, five suspensions for, you know, for the kinds of kids that, you know, people traditionally think we enroll on a continuation campus, I think is just tremendous. So, knock on wood. It's been an absolutely phenomenal.
Knock on that wood, please.
It's been an absolutely phenomenal school year. It's a great feeling tone down there, and we're really excited to be there. So, I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And I will continue with this in that you can see on your matrix that we started a bridge program at Santa Barbara High School. So, we left the Santa Barbara Continuation High School CDS code there, and we started a program for ninth and 10th grade students. It started about October. And Dave Meister, the assistant principal, can start walking up to the podium. He's going to give a little brief overview from the principal, Mark Caprito, about that program and status. It started slowly because we didn't know we were going to start that right away. And we got it going in October. There are some students there. The plan, as you can see from the matrix, is to have a similar continuation program for ninth and 10th grade students at the Dos Pueblos High School setting there. And they are so excited about that. There's a team of teachers and a counselor and the principal that have been begging me to meet with them for the last month. They want to get this started, a special academy. And I told them they needed to wait until, you know, we talked about this with the board and how to move forward. And so, we have a date now to, you know, following this. But they are very excited about having an opportunity for the students who are very early in their high school career, showing signs of not meeting the expected progress, and having an alternative setting right there on the campus that's much more flexible and easy to be back right in the regular high school for those kids who the comprehensive high school setting isn't really a match, particularly in the beginning. So, Dave Meister will present a very brief update of the Santa Barbara High School continuation program. Dave?
Thank you, Ellen. Santa Barbara Continuation High School, the primary goal is to provide additional guided educational assistance to ninth and 10th grade students in math and English language arts. The eligibility for the continuation school would be incoming freshmen and sophomores who have not been achieving the expected academic progress in the traditional high school setting. The program itself will be using STAR scores, previous grade history, and teacher recommendations. Students are identified for enrollment by using those criteria. Students are offered a series of pre-tests to identify areas of academic strength and areas of concern. This is followed by a learning plan designed specifically to meet the areas of deficiency while working to increase skills of strength. Students are provided alternative educational strategies that include, but are not limited to, indirect instruction, small group instruction, direct whole group instruction, combined with a series of formative assessments and benchmarks to determine progress at nine-week intervals and to determine student success. Interventions and educational strategies are established by the staff working collaboratively together to promote student success that features learning as the number-one criteria regardless of how much time is involved. And that's a brief synopsis.
So, I guess, just without going too much further than this, we're really trying to build, if you will, a pyramid of interventions for students beginning in the ninth grade. And having the La Cuesta continuation be a school that has many options and alternatives. In fact, starting next year, our homeschool Santa Barbara ninth through 12th grade students, in fact, there's a parent meeting going on right now over there. They will become a part of La Cuesta's independent study program. And the homeschool is going to be a K eight program. So, we're really expanding the options and possibilities for students and trying to create a system where there's no place where there's not a support, that there's no crack for a student to fall through. And so far, the La Cuesta direct instruction model down here with a larger campus and more opportunities has been very successful, as you can see from the data that we've been able to collect so far. Students will tell you that as well. And the bridge program, as it's called, at Santa Barbara High School is also off to a good start. We'd like to start one at Dos Pueblos. So, we're open for questions?
All right. Shall we take public comment first and then have board questions? Is that okay? Let's go ahead and do that.
One public comment, Mr. Wheeler?
Good evening. Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association. While this is a noble plan and a proposition that's put before you, I think the, I think it's a Chinese proverb that says, "Go slow to go fast." And I would encourage the board to think in those terms. We've had less than one year to determine the feasibility and the capability of congealing students from all over the school district into a single site. I haven't seen a lot of teacher input on this plan. And teachers are the ones delivering that direct instruction. I think it's important to get their input on that. I would encourage the board to hear from those teachers who are actually doing that. The other piece I would like to really call out to you is the idea of the board's, I think, foresight in keeping a Galleta presence in this. And I'm not really sure that Santa Barbara or San Marcos in the Nolita area would really fall into that Galleta presence. I'm concerned that students who already are having a challenging time getting to school and being successful in school would now be transporting themselves from the Galleta area into downtown Santa Barbara at, you know, someplace between 7:30 and 9 o'clock in the morning, and the success of those students getting there. Just a question that I'd like to pose to you and to think through that in terms of really reflecting before we make any further moves to consolidate program. We've had a number of other programs out there, say, the CDS program that has had a very difficult time holding on to staff because of the challenging students that are there. And integrating that piece into the whole program and making sure that's a successful piece of that, I think is an essential part of this. So, I would just encourage you to think through those challenges that are facing this consolidation. And I would encourage you to really give a lot of thought to this before any decision is made to move forward with a further consolidation. If we wait another year and we find that the program is working successfully, all we've done is waited another year. We haven't wasted resources. We haven't done anything that's outside of the scope. And it gives us an opportunity to really sit back and look at a two-year longitudinal study to determine if there is significant data to support a further consolidation. So, I would ask you to do that. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you. All right. Board comments and questions? Dr. Noel?
I just want to make sure, I don't think I understand. Is this just moving La Cuesta, the same program, just a carbon copy, creating a downtown site? Or is this a different kind of program? Is this still a continuation school? Do you only go part-day?
The continuation students go five hours a day. When I inherited the program, they went four hours a day. So, currently downtown, we have four teachers instead of, we used to have two and two. So, we're hoping that you would allow us to move two more teachers downtown. So, we'd have six direct instruction teachers. But it is the same continuation school with the hopes that we are now actually offering an adult ed class in the afternoons. We're calling it adult ed, but it's an extra class that we have consistently 10 to 12 students that stay for it three days a week from 2:00 to 4:00. So, we've extended the day for some of our students, an extra two hours, three days a week. But we do a five-hour day rather than a four-hour day.
And what remains? Does anything remain at Santa Barbara High School?
Santa Barbara High School now has a bridge program. They have retained the CDS number, but there is no longer a La Cuesta continuation program there. It's next door.
It's a separate school with a CDS number?
Yes. It previously, it's actually the old Los Alturis number.
And that's the part that, and that program is for?
Santa Barbara High School is running the program for at-risk ninth and 10th graders.
Then I do have, I don't want to take it more time. I do have questions about that program, but I want to yield now to others. I want to come back.
Okay. Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I just share some of the questions, I guess, that Mr. Wheeler raised. And that is, when we talked about doing this last year and we sort of saw this as almost like a pilot to see how it was going to work.
Right.
And so, I've always been kind of interested in how we were going to determine whether it was working well or not.
Right.
And I think some of the statistics you gave us today are definitely part of that assessment.
Sure.
But I would like to add to Mr. Wheeler's question about teacher input, which I would like to see teacher input and teacher reaction from all the sites
Right.
to how they feel about the consolidation of the site. But also, parent input from the various sites, and especially from maybe some of the DP and San Marcos parents who are going to be affected by however we, whatever we decide to do with that.
Sure.
I am concerned about, because we had talked previously about the Galleta site being at DP.
Right.
And that had, I thought of it as almost an assurance that the DP site would remain. So, I am concerned now that we're talking about making that the San Marcos site because I'm assuming that some of the DP students, if the San Marcos, if the DP site is changed and consolidated more at San Marcos, that some of those students would go to San Marcos.
My expectation would be that some of the DP, right.
And some of them would come to the downtown.
Right.
But it seems to me a much easier transition if the San Marcos students, some of them went out to DP and some of them came downtown.
Right.
So, I'm concerned about that. And I know that may not be your issue. That may be district concerns. But the teacher input and the parent input, and I certainly don't want to leave out the student input
Sure.
about how people are feeling about this.
And so, how would you like that to come back? Because I was told this would be, I was going to bring a couple of students this evening, and then I was told I had seven minutes, so not to bring students. And so, it was kind of like, ah! So...
I think I would like to have a more formal. I'm always, I always find it less helpful when we just have a couple of students who come
Sure.
because, you know, those are just maybe the students who are willing to do it and willing to come out and spend.
Willing to get up in public, too, yeah.
Who like it, because if they don't, they're less willing to do that.
Right.
So, I would be much more supportive of something more, more formal.
Do you want like a survey or?
I was thinking something along the lines of a survey that could go out to staff, students,
Okay.
and parents, so that we could get perhaps a broader cross-section of responses. Because that also would help me in understanding the issue about DP as well.
Okay. And we actually are currently polling our students to find out where they are planning on attending next year. And it might be back to their traditional campus or, you know, given if the campus is here or there, you know, which, La Cuesta campus. So, that's really simple. And so, I definitely can get you a poll of teachers and a poll of parents. Probably not as easy. Our parents are not as engaged, but I definitely will make an effort to do that. And by the way, we are having a parent graduation next Tuesday evening at 6:00. Our parent project, we've had 12 to 15 parents very regularly for the last 10 Tuesday evenings. So, any of you, if you would like to come next Tuesday evening, just next door in the courtyard and participate in that graduation or, you know, be there to be a part of that, you're more than welcome to come.
Can I just request that we get an email reminder of that?
I certainly can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Whomever wants to send it, thank you.
Sure, I will do that.
Other questions?
Just real quick, in light of Mr. Wheeler and Mrs. Cordero, in my mind, I remember meeting with you, and I think at the time, you were telling me that you thought Dos Pueblos would be the best place. And I think you were telling me that, from a transportation standpoint, but also that San Marcos wasn't really ideal.
Well, at the time that you and I met, it was my belief that it would be Dos Pueblos that had always been the talking point, as it were. But I subsequently have met with Dr. Sarvis and Ms. Sawaski and have been informed that apparently enrollment is down dramatically at San, I don't know if dramatically is the right word, but enrollment is down at San Marcos and is busting at the seams at Dos Pueblos. And so, apparently, there is a need for, you know, it's a facilities issue. And so, that's, again, that's not, that's out of my control. So, that's a decision between those of you sitting in front of me.
Well, let me just add to that. We looked at overall capacity at the school. We looked at the drawn numbers of students at Dos Pueblos and at San Marcos and projections about those students. We also looked at distances, and we looked at bus travel. And we figured that San Marcos is as good a location as Dos Pueblos, and it is probably more central to the district. In this case, we'd be, we wouldn't be dominoing students from Dos Pueblos to San Marcos and bringing the San Marcos students downtown. We would instead be going to all of the students, deciding which students would best fit in the downtown setting and then which would best fit in the Galleta setting. And we believe that students can get to San Marcos just as easily as they can get to Dos Pueblos.
That is one of my concerns, too, though, because Dos Pueblos is not impacted for its facilities by inbounded students. And so, if this is impacted, its facilities, it's affected because they're essentially over-enrolling transfer students. And to inconvenience our kids that are at the most risk based on out-of-boundary student enrollment, I don't think that that's a direction that we should go in. So, I do think it's something that needs to be considered very carefully. Dr. Noel, did you want to chime in again?
Yes, I'd like to ask some questions. I want to go back to this question about the CDS number. And I want to make sure I understand. A CDS number is issued by the state of California to a school?
Yes.
That is its legal identity?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, did I hear correctly, there will be a school at Santa Barbara High School with a separate CDS number?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And what's its name going to be?
It's going to be the Santa Barbara Continuation High School.
It's the same, yes. Same CDS.
Same CDS that was there when it was Santa Barbara LaCuesta.
And the students?
No, it's the old Los Alturas.
Los Alturas, excuse me.
What?
It's the number that was formally assigned to Los Alturas Continuation High School.
Okay, okay. And the LaCuesta will no longer be located there? That CDS number, correct.
LaCuesta's CDS number is located next door at 710 Santa Barbara Street.
Okay, okay. And this school is going to be for ninth and 10th graders?
Ninth and 10th graders, yes.
And how are they chosen?
It's, it's, no, it's students who are struggling. And the main reason that this school came about, Dr. Noel, is, as you know, LaCuesta is one of the options for struggling students. And what Ms. Parker was just talking about is moving students around the district who are struggling sometimes isn't the best decision to make.
Yeah, but you're going where I want to pursue something. And how many hours a day will this meet? How many periods?
It's going to be the same. Six periods.
Six per day?
Yeah.
So basically, Santa Barbara High School will now have, will be, that campus will house two schools. One of which, one of which is struggling students, and one of which is, and will, now the next question is, will the students who go to that school mostly come from Santa Barbara High School?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a lot of questions about, about how, about what the assignment, okay? But I have a bigger philosophic question.
Sure.
Because it sounds to me like at least a cynic might think that Santa Barbara High School is trying to create a new school to dump its low scores so it can raise its API. And I'd like to hear a discussion of that. Getting, how many students are we talking about?
We were thinking roughly about 100 students.
Well, I don't understand why we have to have a separate CDS number, a separate legal school for those students. They're Santa Barbara High School students. And by pulling them out of Santa Barbara High School, it may be very convenient for Santa Barbara High School to raise its scores, but it also is creating, it's not just tracking, it's creating a separate school for tracking.
I understand, okay, sorry.
I'm troubled by this.
Dr. Noel, I think a couple of things. We probably, we should probably have this as a separate agenda item, and the CDS code and retaining that at the school was an avenue to retain the separate funds that go along with that. If we give up the...
But is my analysis not correct? I mean, it will be getting its own API, it will be getting its own scores, all, its own star reporting, and so on, right?
I don't believe it will get its own API. It depends on how many kids are...
It's got a CDS number.
It gets a CDS code, yes.
Every one of our four continuation schools has an ASAM model and alternative method for accountability, yes.
That's right.
Well, I'm very concerned about this, and then, and I think we ought to bring it back.
All right.
Because then I want to raise questions about what kind of assessments are being used, what kind of cut points are being used, and to learn more about, some of the things you said, don't misunderstand me, when you got into the content, it sounded very interesting, and I'd like to understand that better. What kind of intervention programs, whether you're looking at any kind of differentiation within that school between those who are really far behind and those who are closer to being on grade level.
Thank you. And we will put that on then as a separate agenda item shortly. Any other quick last comments before we move on? All right, we'll talk about that further in the near future. We are moving on to F2, the Preliminary Report on Special Education and Recommendations Regarding Administrative Reorganization from Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistance Team.
As part of the FICMAT evaluation of special education, we ask for the team to provide a preliminary report to the board expressly for the purpose of advising the board regarding administrative reorganization. Team members Joanne Murphy and Ann Stone are here with us tonight to report to the board, and this is Joanne Murphy.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and the, for members of the board, there is a packet, in your board packet, of attachments for this particular item, and I'll be reviewing those as we go along. I think before I start, it would be good for me to just kind of put this particular scope point in context of the total report, because while this says that it is a preliminary report, it's really a preliminary report on one very small, not small, but one area of focus in the study. There are four major areas of our study, parent participation and communication. A second is the organizational review, which is the section that we're dealing with this evening. The third area is a fiscal review, and the final area is a program review. There are, within each scope, there are about 18 different sub-areas. So again, we're only talking about one specific area in the organizational review. And I wanted to start, first of all, by commending the district, because our reports don't often reflect some of the positive things that are going on. And I think that the board and the superintendent should be commended for your proactive effort and responsiveness to the concerns that have been raised by both staff and parents in the district. I think that we find that there is an unprecedented transparency in this process that we don't often find when we do other FICMAT reports. You'll see in a few moments, the scope of stakeholders and methods that we've used are pretty extraordinary in terms of the typical study. And then finally, there's been a very thorough preparation of the scope of study and the focus on moving the special education department forward and better integrating it with other departments within the district. I think the most positive thing that I've seen so far is the opportunity to interview a young lady who is a graduate of the Santa Barbara School District and a student who accessed special education services all throughout her education. And she was a lovely and accomplished young adult who had wonderful things to say about what Santa Barbara Special Education did for her during her time. All right. So first of all, I want to take a look at some of the area, the stakeholder groups that we have met with. We have come up with a recommendation for you this evening on an administrative structure. And I want to give you a little bit of background in terms of some of the preliminary findings that we've made that have kind of brought us to that conclusion of what kind of structure would work the best for you. In addition to that, we've used our collective experience, both Ann and I have way too many years, we won't go into the number, but we have a lot of years in special education administration and program operation. And so we've relied on that background and experience to make a recommendation to you as well. We have looked at, in the past seven days, we have looked at parent survey results, which are not yet complete, parent-focused groups, both private and parent and group meetings, community member meetings, teacher groups, the teacher morale survey, principal groups, district department groups, school board members, previous directors, and clerical support. We have another eight days left in the study, and a couple of days this week and all of next week, and we will complete our, the rest of our study and meeting with each of, continuing to meet with these groups. The background findings that we have are about seven different areas. The one, and a primary one, is the lack of stability in leadership that you had in special education office. I know that the board had expressed some concern about why, why is it that we've had so much turnover, seven directors in the last eight years, which is very unusual. We had the opportunity to interview five out of seven of the previous administrators in special education. Of the remaining two, one could not be located, and one refused to talk to the FICMAT team. But the other five individuals were very responsive and were very open in their particular feelings. There is no one factor that we can point to that says, this is why you don't have, you have such a high turnover rate. However, we have several, and I'll share those with you. First of all, a personal life choice, and these are not necessarily in any particular order, this is just the response that we got from the staff. The second is the cost of living in Santa Barbara. The third, the department, their feeling is that the department was understaffed and unable to perform the duties of the position with the level of professionalism that they expected of themselves. Fourth, the position at director did not carry the authority to make final decisions. Next, when decisions were made, the implementation was delayed by a layered decision-making process. And the last one is that a lot of time was spent in due process and complaint resolution, and that that had a great ability, a great impact on the director's ability to be able to respond and operate effective programs within the department. The second thing that we looked at was to, and this is, I believe this is in your packet, is Attachment 1, which is a comparison of comparable districts. So we took a look at all the districts that are around the Santa Barbara area, and as I understand it, these are districts that you frequently benchmark off of for a variety of reasons. Again, every district tends to structure their special education programs based on their own unique needs as a district, and I'm sure that Santa Barbara will do the same thing. However, we did find that in eight instances in those districts, they, the directors of special education reported to the assistant superintendent, and two of them reported directly to the superintendent. And so one of the things we were asked to look at is what is the appropriate reporting structure that we should recommend for special education? There were eight directors of special education, one executive director, and one assistant superintendent. Under those directors, in three districts, they had additional directors assigned to the program. There were no assistant directors used in any of the other districts. And all of the districts had varying levels of coordinators of special education or program specialists. Okay. In Attachment 2, we took a look, first of all, at your, I don't know if you have overheads of this or not. Okay, good, thank you. We took a look at the positions that you currently have in the special education department. We also worked with your personnel department to sort of calculate what the actual costs are for the staff that you have in place right now. And then we looked at a proposed structure that we think would work very effectively for Santa Barbara, and determined, you know, how much more would this cost to actually be able to implement something? Because we recognize this is a difficult time financially. So our proposal, well, I can review what you currently have, which is a director of special education, a coordinator of special education, a part-time program specialist, and teachers, two teachers on special assignment. However, one thing I would like to clarify for the board is that in the program specialist position and the teachers on special assignment who are also doing program specialist-like activities, you use them very differently here in Santa Barbara than you do in other districts. In other districts, they're very focused on program development, supporting teachers, training, consulting. And here, they had a more specific assignment of case management. So that's a very different kind of structure. In our proposed structure, we're recommending that rather than an assistant superintendent, we didn't think that that would really be necessary at this point, but that an executive director at a level 24 on your salary scale would be an appropriate person who would be, have the primary responsibility for the special education department. In addition to that, two directors would serve as the, those in charge of the day-to-day operations of special ed. And we separated that out, both at the elementary level and at the secondary level. And that was very purposeful because of the fact that there are many issues in the elementary and in the secondary that are very, very different. And in addition to that, we're recommending that program specialists be assigned to support the elementary programs and be assigned to support the secondary programs in the true definition of program specialist services, which is out on the front line, developing staff, developing curriculum, supporting schools, supporting parents, and so on. The, before we go into the, the actual structure, there's a couple of other points I wanted to make in terms of our rationale. The second rationale, in addition to the issue of leadership and the turnover, is staff morale. And right now, we have received almost 100% response from your teachers on the staff morale survey. And 81% of your teachers are, have, feel that the morale in the special education department is very low. 72% of your staff do not feel valued by the district, and 70% of the staff do not feel valued by the community. So you can see where we feel a need for those teachers and staff to feel like they've got a high level of support, both at the district level and at the site level. The third area is the, that there is a community perception that we have found in listening to people so far, that there is a perception of distrust of the district's special education The next area is a confusion over roles and who is responsible for the oversight of special education. Is it the site? Is it the district? And we've gotten as many answers on either side, and, but nothing very definitive in terms of who is actually in charge of special education. Where do you go to get those issues resolved? The next area is that the special education programs are basically operating without guidance and without a clear vision. That is due in large part to the leadership turnover, because every new person that comes in kind of has a different, a different direction and a different sense of where they want to go. That will be corrected, hopefully, when you can get some stability in that leadership position. There are many parent concerns about services not being provided in a timely manner. There's a lack of consistency of special education programs and services from site to site. There is no continuity that we're finding in the programs. We see very good programs going on in individual school sites, but if you define what is the special education continuum of services in Santa Barbara, you can't define it, because it looks very different from school to school. All right. So going back to your handout, then, we looked at the overall responsibilities of the special education department, and we found that there are some responsibilities that have recently been moved into the special education department. And we're going to recommend that when this new reorganization occurs, that there be a district commitment to support special education and allow that director to really focus on special education. So if you look at some of their responsibilities, for example, Section 504, which is a function of general education, had recently been moved into the responsibility of the director of special education. We're recommending that that be moved back to the alternative programs, which is where it is located in most districts. Second, the home hospital responsibilities had also been moved to special education, and we're recommending that those move back to education services. Special education has always been responsible for health services, and so we're recommending that that continue, because there is a lot of... that that continue because there is a lot of overlap between the health services that are provided to special education students. The fourth is the creation of a parent advisory committee for special education, and I'll go through that in just a moment. Fifth is creating a confidential administrative position using existing resources. And so this afternoon, we were working with the clerical staff to kind of look at all the duties and to sort through what makes sense to be the confidential secretary that would work with the executive director and those that would support the two directors of special education. The total estimated cost of switching to this new structure is somewhere between $75,000 and $80,000. Okay. Item four, or Attachment Four. This is what the new structure would look like. The reporting structure would be, special education would remain where it is right now under the responsibility of the associate superintendent. You'll notice that we've changed the director position to an executive director of special education, and off to the left, we've recommended that there be a parent advisory committee for special education. Over to the right, you'll also notice that there is a resource parent, and we're recommending that there be a resource parent who is available to parents at school sites, and preferably once the, the system is built, that every school have a resource parent. It's a volunteer position. Those parents reach out to other special education parents at that school site and help them to navigate through the system. And then down below, you'll see the director of elementary and the director of secondary. There is one program specialist assigned to the elementary and two program specialists assigned to the secondary. One, one for middle school, one for high school, but it doesn't actually break out that way that evenly, so they would probably share some duties. On Attachment Five, we go into a little bit more detail about the parent advisory committee. And this is a committee that is very much structured like a community advisory committee that you would have at the SELPA level. It's an advisory-only committee, and it is approved by the school board. Its purpose is to work collaboratively with the special education department and parents. And we feel that this would be a great opportunity for parents to be able to share their concerns, to look, to share parent concerns about program development and program operation, and to be able to meet face-to-face with the district administration. In number four, there are membership guidelines that are outlined in education code for community advisory committees, and we're recommending that this committee follow that same format. Generally, these committees have their own set of bylaws and operating guidelines, and we would recommend that those be developed as well. And then that, that they have goals that are set for the year as a committee, and that they report annually to the board. All right, in the last section of your packet, what we have done is, based on the findings that we have, based on what we know is effective department management, we have developed a series of duties for both the executive director and the special education directors that I think you'll find incorporates all of the concerns that I talked about earlier. And from, you know, the overall management of responsibility for the executive director to establishing very clear lines of communication between the districts, the site, the principals, the parents, and so on. One of the things that you'll notice at the end of this is the experience requirement, and that's one thing that we have found, is that in the past, Santa Barbara has not had the opportunity to have directors in place in this kind of a position that have had some experience in special education management. Going from a program specialist to an executive director position, or going from a program manager, is really, you really need some background and experience in management in special education to effectively operate a program of this size. So you'll notice that we're recommending a minimum of two years of experience as a special education manager. We also put the salary range up there at a level 24, which is an existing level that you have here in the district, in the hopes that you'll be able to attract people that have that experience and background. The directors of special education, you'll find that their duties and job description narrow the focus even more down to the building site level and the parent level. And that's, that's what we have so far.
Thank you very much. I'm sure there are lots of questions and comments from the board, but shall we start with public comment?
Okay. First speaker is Mrs. Eckelberger, followed by Mrs. Shrove, followed by Mrs. Smith.
And I am going to close the public comment at this time, so if you want to get your comment in, go ahead and do that right now.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to express my concern once again that writing a job description and engaging in a job recruiting process before the board and the superintendent have even been made aware of the current state of affairs in the department, let alone the key issues which have created our current turmoil, is simply putting the cart before the horse. How can you realistically develop a list of qualifications, as well as personal and professional qualities necessary for a key leadership position, without knowing what personal and professional qualities are needed? If it was just about degrees, credentials, and years of experience in the field, any or all of the last seven directors of special education should have been successful in the job. Clearly, there are other elements involved which have yet to be brought to the surface and which seem to be crucial in ensuring success or failure. How many more hiring processes do we need to endure before those issues are revealed and dealt with? How can the board and superintendent even consider hiring a new administrator before determining what caused the last seven apparently qualified and seemingly motivated professionals to walk, and in a few cases, run away from the job? The answer is, you can't. Hiring another administrator before first discovering what went so horribly wrong the last seven times is simply asking for an eighth turnover in this position. And I hope you'll agree with me. The children of this district and the faculty and the staff who strive to serve them deserve better than that. A huge component of developing the list of characteristics necessary in our next special ed leader is developing and clearly articulating our mission and vision for the Santa Barbara School District Special Ed Department. As a district, where do you want to go regarding special education? What philosophy and educational foundation is going to drive your decision-making? Until those questions have been discussed and resolved by the board in concert with representative stakeholders, I'm afraid that the current climate of every professional making his or her best attempt in isolation and without foundational direction will continue unchecked and obviously without success. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Eckelberger. Mrs. Shrove, followed by Mrs. Smith, followed by Mrs. Lauer.
First of all, I'd like to state my concern about this rush to establish a new administrative structure for the special education department, particularly this urgency about recruiting a new director or directors even while stakeholder interviews are ongoing and the underlying problems of the district are yet to be uncovered and presented to the board. I've heard Dr. Sarvis state more than once the importance of advertising the latest special education director position in time for the prime spring hiring season, but I'm not convinced. Districts all across the state are bracing for massive budget cuts and program losses, and most are preparing to send pink slips to record numbers of their faculty. The same is true of Santa Barbara School District. With this unheard-of wave of layoffs looming in the not-too-distant future, it would seem that the applicant pool statewide will likely be both wider and deeper by the middle of the summer, when the final budget numbers present themselves than they are right now. In short, we are likely to receive serious interest from more and better qualified candidates after July 1st rather than before April 15th. Secondly, I have serious reservations about moving to fill an open position without first exposing the flaws in the entire department. In the absence of consistent and responsive leadership, this district has created an organizational culture of obstruction, retaliation, and fierce protection of individual fiefdoms. Relabeling jobs, rotating personnel, and adding new layers of bureaucracy will not expose those within the system who have thrived on conflict and deception. It will only permit their destructive behavior to persist and permeate the organization in new ways. To be blunt, this department needs to undergo comprehensive exploratory surgery, not just a needle punch biopsy. And when the tumor or tumors are identified and removed, the surgeons had better be sure to take wide margins to prevent a regrowth of the cancer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shrove. Mrs. Smith, followed by Mrs. Lauer, followed by Mrs. Bream.
With the first two speakers' permission, I would like to upload their presentation on sb-schooltalk.com. We are in the midst of educational reform, and you spoke so eloquently. I thank you so much. Please read the seminal document, "Road to Nowhere: Illusions and Broken Promises in Special Education" by Kalman Hetlemann. It is on sb-schooltalk.com. This report and the hiring of FICMAT, which was the former employer of Eric Smith, is a symptom of a very, very serious problem. There is such a disconnect between the administration of our national school system and the schools themselves, the teachers, the parents, the students. We are in the midst of exposure of school corruption. From this will come educational reform, and we will restore justice and sanity and democratic education in our schools. All this was written before the parent meeting, which will be held Monday, March 16th, at 6:00 p.m., a perfect time for dinner, but you're not serving dinner. It will be held at the Louis Lowry Center. I had to go find out where that was. It's on De Lavina and Victoria Streets. The proposal posits an increase up to $1 million in administrative salaries. That's including the secretaries and the benefits. Let's be honest. This is not going to work, and if you pursue this, it will be the hype of folly. It has no strategy. It has no understanding of how a special education has to work. It talks about CPACs, and at the December 8th meeting, Robin Sawalsky wrote CPAC, not knowing that we had had a CPAC that functioned well, and unfortunately, it was disbanded because this district does not want to hear from parents. It had a structure where it had two coordinators. He was fired. David Gilbertson was fired for standing up for a student. Retaliation is rampant. This is corruption.
Thank you. Mrs. Lauer, followed by Mrs. Bream.
Good evening. I am a teacher here in the district, and I just want to start by saying it's difficult to present something like this having only just barely heard the presentation from FICMAT. So obviously, this, these are thoughts that were prepared before that presentation. And I want to thank FICMAT for some of the things that they did say. I think that some of their information is very accurate, and I think that morale in the staff is very low, and I think that that's a point that needs to be considered very seriously. And obviously, when I prepared these, I realized, I looked at the agenda, and I know that the issue before the board tonight is a recommendation that the FICMAT made to restructure the administration. And I feel that this is premature, that interviews have not been completed, and as of yet, and of course, I did not know entirely how much data had been collated, but obviously not all data has been collated and understood and reported on. And as a teacher, because special education decisions are made from the top down, and because we depend on our administrators at every level to be the foundation from which we work, all these kinds of decisions are going to affect us as teachers. And it seems important that teachers need to be informed of the results of these, of the research and the possible recommendations before these kinds of decisions are made. And we're being informed now of a preliminary report, but I think that the information needs to come through more than one channel, more than just a board meeting. The manner in which the independent review was conducted seems on its face not independent. My notification for the meetings for the interviews came at a late date with very little notice, very little prior notice, and came from the district, not from the independent review board. I understand that mass communication needs to happen, and the district has all of those names, and that might be a, a good way to disseminate information. However, I already have a lack of faith in the administration and in the district, so to receive that information from the district and not from the independent review organization did not help my feeling of confidence. I'm not interested in dispute resolution. I'm not interested in special education identification and programming on a case-by-case basis. I'm interested in a global vision for our district that would provide teachers with a standard of best practice, a common system for answering hard questions, a professional courtesy of making team decisions, and the understanding that an IEP is a team process and not a contentious process. I've been made to feel as if I need to be fearful going into IEPs and making recommendations.
Your three minutes are up. Can you wrap up?
Absolutely. I just want the board to know that I feel that this, it's important to regard this as preliminary, and that I would encourage no decisions and no recruiting occur at this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Bream?
Hi, thank you, and thank you, FICMAT, for what you've done. Joanne, and who was it? Anne. You said a few things that are interesting. I do, I'm an eye doctor, and I go in and I help people evaluate their practices. It's usually ophthalmology. And I help them decide who to hire, who to fire, how to reformat so they can have a better scenario, so similar to your job, only different. I think you hit on the key thing, but you said that you've outlined a fairly decent outline of how things should go, and in all honesty, I think you've overlooked the major point. When the doctor in charge of that facility is awful, the facility usually remains awful unless you can buffer the doctor, when the administration and supervisors of the special ed department that ultimately have the say are still in charge, you have not eliminated some of the things that the prior special ed directors quit for. For example, you mentioned the department was understaffed, and it was not providing the quality of care to represent their professional idea of what should occur. Yes, you've addressed that a little, but not entirely, because the ultimate problem is that if you bring a dynamic person in to be the director of special ed, and they have no autonomy, and they have no ability to change the way things are done, a great example was perhaps Gilbertson, I don't know the particulars, but you have someone in there standing up for special ed, and the district says, oop, we're going to change your position. We don't like what you're saying. We don't like what you're saying." But they can't say that out loud, so they just give them a new job. That's exactly the stuff that special ed parents have seen.
Mrs. Bream, could you address the board, please?
I'm talking to FICMAT as well, sorry, but I'd love to address you. I apologize. But with no authority to make decisions being one of the things the prior special ed directors said, and you still have someone who's overwhelmed, Robin Sawalsky, in charge of them as the, what is it, associate, your title's so long, I always forget. Will you help me? Associate, someone help me. Associate Superintendent of Educational Services. She's so overwhelmed every time I see her, I don't know how she does her job, but then to be in charge of special ed ultimately and have the ability to say yes or no, and the perhaps lack of a global idea of what they're going to do with the whole program. So you have this dynamic person say, "We're going to change it this way," but the person in charge is overwhelmed, doesn't maybe have agreement with the overall program, and they ultimately have the say of yes or no. Who's going to stay in that position? I certainly wouldn't. And then the other thing they said is, "They would make a decision, but it was so layered and filtered from above that nothing really ever happened." Isn't that right? So you still have the same person in charge. I don't think it's a good outline. That's a very strong point I'd like to make. You ultimately have the same people in charge of special ed. And the people that are in charge, you know, most districts, I called around and found out, most people had more administrators than we have, so they could be proactive. And although I agree with that part of it, I do think if you have the same ideas in charge, nothing changes.
Thank you, Mrs. Bream.
All right. I am going to ask maybe FICMAT, if you want to come back up, just for one quick question, because we had so much public comment about that, and that is the timing of going out to advertise. Obviously, we've had board discussion about how this needs to happen during the spring hiring season. How detrimental is it if we wait till later, and what do you see as a...
As much of a fiscal crisis as we have in the state, I don't believe that it affects the director of special education level. I expect that those positions, which are extremely difficult to fill, and you can understand why, I don't believe that those would be in the layoff category. So I don't think that by waiting until the summer, that there would be any advantage in doing that.
Would it be a disadvantage?
It would be a disadvantage, I think, in waiting, yes.
So how long would you say that a board has to consider this in order to be able to hire during the prime hiring season?
I would think at some point, the sooner the better, but maybe a couple of weeks, but not beyond that, because the people that have an interest in this kind of position are out interviewing in the springtime. So the more you delay, the less opportunity you have to get somebody that's really experienced.
Okay, thank you. Board members?
Yes, I'm going to, well, first question. In your flow chart, where you do have the associate superintendent at the top of the chart, is that because that's a good position to have? Or did you look at Mrs. Sawalsky, or Dr. Sawalsky's current job descriptions and say to yourself, "That's okay, she can handle this too"?
Well, special education in any of the districts that I'm familiar with is never an entity in and of itself, and they generally do not report directly to the superintendent. In the majority of cases, they are within ed services because they are a service option for students. And so it's not uncommon for them to be under the direction of the associate superintendent. However, I would like to emphasize that I think it should be the district's expectation that this executive director stands on their own two feet and is quite capable of developing the program. And granted, there are many, many issues here in Santa Barbara that will be addressed in the final report, and that they take that action plan from the report, or that report, and develop an action plan that addresses each and every one of those. But I would not expect that it would be Robin or any associate superintendent that would have the primary responsibility. However, I do believe that she would hold the accountability for the special ed director to meet all of those requirements.
Okay, but did you look at her job descriptions currently?
I am aware, yes, of her responsibilities.
And what percent of her time do you think would be on this job?
I, yeah, I don't know if I could attach a percentage to that. Robin may be able to answer that for you better than I can.
Now, I'm going to put my audit hat on. On the audit committee of banks, I was the one designated to ask these questions, so I'm going to ask them of you. Did you get support and cooperation from all the administrative staff here?
Absolutely.
And nobody gave you directions? Nobody gave you guidelines or put blinders on what you can do and couldn't do?
No, no, absolutely not.
And is there anything that you would say to us about personnel in a closed session that you can't say in a public session?
Nothing other than, I wouldn't specifically, we have made a commitment of confidentiality in our sessions, and so any of the specific information, whether it be from parents or from any district staff members or board members, is confidential, so I would not be able to share any of that with you. What we do share are the common trends that we find as a result of those discussions.
Thank you.
Other board members? Mrs. Ekin?
Oh, I just had a comment regarding the timing and our search for the best possible director. It seems to me that there's probably not a huge pool of people that will fit the criteria that we're looking for. And so I guess my concern is that if we hold off looking, waiting for more input that we're trying to match up with someone out there, that in fact, the people that are out there are going to be more likely to adapt themselves to our concerns than our concerns are going to be able to adapt themselves, per se, to a specific individual that we might identify later. I don't know if I'm making my point, but I guess my concern is that there's not a lot of people out there that could do this job as well as we want them to do. And so that by waiting, in fact, we may not necessarily improve our chances of getting someone better.
I don't believe you improve your chances, no. The sooner you can finalize that recommendation and move forward with the hiring process, the better. But I do believe it's kind of a matched fit. Directors, like any administrators, will probably look at your needs. They'll look at their own skill set and determine whether or not that's a good match.
Mrs. Cudero?
I had just a couple of comments, or maybe questions. One has to do with the hiring, and I'll come back to that in a second. There was concerns raised about, and I don't know if I'm directing this to FICMAT or to our own staff, because I'm not sure how this was handled, about the way that teachers and others receive notices for the meetings, and even the tenor of those notices and the timing of those notices. And so I'm wondering how that occurred, and if there's any way to compensate for whatever limit, for however that might have limited the response that we got.
Yeah, I think I can address that if you want me to. Okay. And FICMAT typically operates in the same way wherever we're doing a study. We notify the district the individuals that we would like to speak with, and we ask that the district make contact with those individuals and set up the meetings. That's our standard protocol, and then we take it from there. Now, we may follow up from that and recognize that we need to meet further with some individuals, and we'll request that as well. So in this particular instance, I believe there was a late notification, and we have come back this week to provide some additional opportunities to meet with staff and some other parents and so on that have had concerns. And then we are also scheduling into the next week that we're here, which we would typically be working on items C and D next week, but we're doing a large parent meeting in addition to the one that we've had in response to the concerns about people that have not had the opportunity to attend. We also met today and yesterday with teacher groups that by their own choice, they were re-notified again by the district and came in today to meet with us, so.
Okay. I appreciate that additional opportunity. Thank you. I also had the question about delaying the hiring. Having worked in education for my whole career, I know that spring is typically the hiring season. And one of the, I think, I fear that one of the dangers we run in delaying, especially if we were to delay into July, is that if we were hiring some, especially if we want to hire somebody, well, with the experience that we haven't typically hired in our past, if we're hiring an existing director of special ed, and they're leaving their district in July, with school about to start in August, you know, and that whole process has taken place during the summer, I'm not sure how comfortable I would be with hiring someone who would put their district in that position. So that makes me quite nervous about delaying the timing. I would almost think that if we were to delay, we would have to delay a significant period of time in order, maintain an interim position in order to hire at a more opportune period than over the summer. And that also worries me. So I would like to go forward with hiring someone with the understanding that there would be intensive orientation, training, et cetera, with this person to bring them into whatever we have developed by the time that person is hired. However, I say that with a great caveat, because if the community, if the stakeholders, whoever they are, the community, the parents, the teachers, et cetera, don't feel that that is an appropriate way to go, or they don't buy into that process, then I fear we're going to set this person up for defeat again. So I'm really torn on that. But I guess my point on that is that we either have to delay a fairly substantial period, or we have to go ahead. I don't think trying to do it in the summer is a good plan.
My professional opinion would be that waiting until July 1st would be a real mistake. And the reason I say that is, one, the access to the most qualified staff who would have an interest in moving. Special ed directors are operating summer programs in the summer, and so they're already thinking about the next school year at that point and planning for the opening of school. I think that this position in Santa Barbara offers a great challenge and a great opportunity for the right person, and anything that you can do to facilitate that and get that right person on board, the earlier the better, primarily because it gives them planning time to get integrated into the district, to start meeting with parents, start meeting with teachers, start looking at the program, so that it's up and running in September. If you don't hire someone for the opening of school, and you delay it with another interim position, then you're going to be well into next year, because I do not believe you'll be successful in getting a candidate during the course of the year. So you'd almost have to wait another year, which I think would be a real detriment to the program, its students and families.
Thank you. Other board comments? Dr. Noem?
Thank you, Madam President, and then thank you, Murphy and Ms. Stone. I appreciate all the hard work you've done, and I like your preliminary report. It's very interesting. I'm anxious to hear more. One very little thing, I was wondering what the response rate's been on the parent survey?
Right now, the response rate is 15.4%. I understand that we have other surveys that are still to be counted, and Bill Gillespie is delivering them to us when he comes on Wednesday, tomorrow. And in addition to that, there were about 50 that were returned as undeliverable with the wrong address, and the special ed department has re-notified those families and resent the questionnaire. So we're not quite finished yet with that summary.
I find it very interesting that you did get a very, you got 100% response rate on the teacher survey.
Almost 100%.
Almost 100%, yeah, that's very interesting. What about at the focus groups? Can you give me an idea of how many people appeared at the various focus groups?
At this point, I did not, that was not on the task for me this evening, and so I do not have that. However, we do have all the data on each focus group, the number of parents, the number of teachers, everyone that we've met with, and that will be summarized in the final report.
See, I had, I mentioned in our brief meeting, and we ran out of time, that I had some problems with the research design, and I don't mean to be critical of your work, because I don't know who did it, so I just look at it.
I did. You can be critical.
Well, the biggest problem I had was that I didn't see any sign of sampling. And here's the problem with that. Some parents have told me that they won't even waste, they won't even go to a meeting because they think it's futile. And I've heard that also from at least two teachers, that, oh, nothing's going to happen. So those people don't, when you don't sample, they have just self-selection, those people don't, you don't get to talk to them. I asked in one case, would it have made a difference in this instance had you been invited? And in other words, drawn and given invitation? The answer was yes. Then that input would have been heard. So I'm concerned. Now, I'm not sure it would add a lot of information, because you've already got pretty negative stuff from teachers, but it would be helpful from parents.
I may have misled you that the input that we had, those six or seven items that I talked about, are common trends that we have found to date from both parents and staff.
From both.
And district staff.
Based on your 15% of the parents.
From every group, everyone that we have met with.
Okay. Well, I have concerns with that, because self-selection is a well-known source of bias in sampling. Another group, for example, that self-selection tends to really seriously underrepresent is disadvantaged minority parents. And there was one family at one focus group I observed, but I have no idea what you've been getting. And my guess is, whomever you get, you don't know what it means, because in any of this kind of work, you always have to ask the question, who did not come and why didn't they come? And I think, I don't know whether you can put it in your study or budget it, but it's not too late to try to look into, to see who didn't show up, and to get some sense of whether there was some systematic body of opinion that we didn't tap because they didn't self-select. Okay? That's my only methodological point tonight. I have a lot more methodology, but it gets pretty tedious. I'm terribly concerned, and this is not a criticism, I understand the rules, the terms under which you operate, but I'm terribly concerned that out of all of this, some of the parents alluded to this, that out of all of this, we are not looking at personnel issues, but only at structural issues, at organizational issues. And it may be that, it may be that there's a very strong interaction between those two dimensions. And you said it, I mean, you swore to confidentiality, so by definition, we can't learn anything about personnel problems, and yet, they could be critical. And I think that that's a problem that we have. And most, and on a positive note, it may be that a solution, that instead of structural solutions, you know, adding more boxes on our organization chart, some of the problems may be solvable by personnel actions. And it would be very, it would be... And it would be very, it would be very good for us to know that, and I don't know the venue where we can know that, you know, obviously, personnel issues are confidential, but it is a very serious problem for us.
And I think I can address that. First of all, I think it's important to address what FICMAT is, what we are not responsible for, okay? We are not the compliance department of the State Department. We have no authority over whether or not the district is in compliance or out of compliance. We have no authorization to evaluate staff or to make recommendations on specific individuals. Our role is simply, is defined by the scopes that this board developed and approved, and those scopes are around program efficiency, parent communication, and organizational structure. So that's why you'll see us just sticking strictly to that. The individuals within that structure, how the district restructures its current personnel or new personnel, is strictly a district call.
I understand completely.
Okay.
Last point, about the timing. I tend to, I share all the sentiments, and Mrs. Cordero's, that dilemma that she says, and my inclination is, okay, let's go interim for another year and wait till this report's really done, and we've had a chance to digest it and discuss it. By the same token, if we have a problem, we need to resolve it. We need some leadership. I'm wondering, though, whether or not we might separate on the issue of two, and just, and go for a director right now, by any other name, and then have the chance, we need a director, but then have a chance to let the study be finished, to let us digest it and have a real discourse with the public about it. And then, most importantly, and I seize upon the idea that's been floated on numerous occasions, that we, I hear people saying, we don't have a philosophy, we don't have a vision for this department. It seems to me that the visioning process is something that I would ideally like to see us talk a lot about it before we start interviewing, so that we have a pretty good idea of what we're looking for. And particularly because at least, none of you, none of you in the public have had this joy of sitting on our recruitment committees. They are bound by, we are told that they're bound by law and that you cannot ask any question that spontaneously, that it's all written out, and every, you sit around the table, and one person asks one, you listen, next person asks another, you listen, and so on. I submit that you will learn a hell of a lot about how someone's intellect works, what their value system is in this stultified, rigid process. I don't know how to solve that, and maybe the lawyers can help us, but that is part of what we have to do, is get a vision and a person who becomes part of it. That's an integral. And that, my sense, based on these preliminary findings and listening to a lot of parents and teachers, my sense is that has been sorely lacking. And I would suggest that we go for one, and that we immediately start some kind of a discourse with the public and with the teachers about the broad vision for that role and that leadership.
Thank you. I mean, my comment on that is that the problem that we would have by delaying for the executive director is the same problem that we would have in hiring for the elementary director and the secondary director, if that's the structure that we end up having. It is the season for hiring for all administrators in the spring, and so that's my concern about delay. However, the other point is that there is an extended period of time between opening a job, closing a job, and then having interviews. And I feel like we will make a significant amount of progress. I mean, that could be at least two months. And so I'm hopeful that that's the direction that we could head in. Any other comments before we close this out quickly? Mr. Herron?
Yes. I agree that an executive director should be hired. I would find it hard time for us to choose the directors and just say to the new executive director, hey, these two people are working for you. It would seem to me that the executive director, he should be the one that implements the vision, or she. Sorry. My daughter would kill me if she hears that. It would seem strange for us to hire three people and say, okay, you three are going to work together. And I think the executive director would have to be the one responsible for helping hire the two people that are going to carry out the duties. So I wouldn't be in favor of hiring three people right away.
That's a good point, Mrs. Deacon.
Yeah, I'm actually really warming to this idea because I do think that there's a lot of urgency about getting a key person in place. I like the idea of, as a board, coming up with our vision of what best matches our needs and what we learn as a result of the study gives opportunity for more input. And the piece we haven't really talked about yet is the financial piece here, because this current proposal calls for an increase of $80,000 more to be spent in administrators, and yet we're looking at all these possible layoffs. And so to me, I think this is a good idea.
If I could just clarify, the $75,000 to $80,000 was not just an administration, that's for the total restructure, so that includes program specialist positions, which would require an additional compensation for that level on the teacher scale, as well as the clerical support. So that was the total figure.
Thank you. Dr. Noem?
A footnote. I'm just thinking off the top. What this district needs is a, so our special education operation needs a fresh start. It needs, it needs, it needs kind of a catharsis, and it needs a sense of, the past is gone and we're doing something new, a total discontinuity with the past. And I just thought of that only in the sense of this process. If this process becomes really a community process with this elected body, taking the initiative to create a new vision, I think that we have a chance to make it, really make a difference. And that vision will make the job attractive. That vision will make someone stay because then it's exciting to do it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Murphy and Ms. Stone, for your support in the audience, but I know that you've been an integral part of the work. And now we'll move on to F3, which is a brief summary from Dr. Hilton on the special education interim director's activities.
We've asked Dr. Hilton to give you a quick update on the activities he's been undertaking in his time in the district.
And I want to talk to whoever set up the agenda and put me at this point. I was just thinking, I think I'm here as, not the present and not the future, but perhaps Christmas present. Not a present necessarily. At any rate, in your packets, I believe it's F3, there's a summary of the activities. I just wanted to point out on those activities that I've been here for 30 days now, 30 workdays, spread over about six weeks. But those things noted in your packet are, it's really not a quantifiable process, but what I tried to do is organize it into the major functions that the director's responsible for and the major relationships that the department has. So I don't want to go through and repeat that. I think we've made some strides in at least getting the train back on the tracks and getting it moving forward, but there's still a lot more to go. I'd characterize this past 30 days as being very reactive time, and that was mentioned by others here, that the department was at times very reactive. I've been forced during that time to be very reactive, in other words, to handle problems that were already there, not to look at vision, not to look at anything beyond almost the fires that were burning. So I feel like, actually, last week, there was, there was, there was an ability to focus on my part, and Rick Nargie was introduced, and he's now here for his second day, but...
We'll ask him for a report a little later tonight.
Yeah, yeah. He could be on at 11. But we've had, even in that two days, time to start looking at the future, the future of this interim position that we're co-directing. And so I just wanted to spend just a couple more minutes and focus on some things. And I think we're turning the corner, or the department director position is turning the corner on being able to be somewhat proactive for these next 40 to 45 days that I'll be with you. And let me talk about a couple of things. We're going to be looking at training, not only for this year, but for next year. We've got already in place some collaborative training in the IEP process for principals, and we're also going to train some of our related services staff, the DIS staff. But then we're looking at training that'll be necessary for next year, and these will, all of these, a lot of these items will come as recommendations for the new director, but we'll have some things in place. Also, the resource parent position, we're interviewing next week for the resource parent position that you, as a board, okayed, and we had 15 applicants for that position. We haven't done, I haven't done a close review of the applicants, but some looking like very qualified people. The institutionalization of some procedures, one of the major criticisms, and I hold that same criticism, is that very little, with all these changes, has been institutionalized. We're starting to do that. I'm starting to get things out to the staff that says, these are our procedures, this is how the district needs to operate. And the ones I'm working on are the ones that are bound by the law, and my feeling there is that because they are driven primarily by the law, that a new director won't need to modify those, but we need to get these kind of things institutionalized. Then we're planning on, when the final FICMAT report's out, spending some time on the beginnings of implementation of some of the recommendations that'll need to start taking place. We're looking at more site support now that Rick's here, that we'll, he and I will both be able to get out and give support to the principals and to the staff at sites, especially during the difficult IEP and the difficult cases. We're working, we'll be working on, we've already done some preliminary things, on extended school year, the summer school for students with disabilities. This is the first year that the district will be in charge of its own extended school year, so we're having to develop a number of things. But we've been working on that, and I'm, we'll have a program that is reflective of quality in place, I really feel. We're starting to look at staffing. Haven't, I've got a number of things in a folder. We haven't sat down and started to staff for next year, but we're going to have to be making recommendations on staffing and placement of personnel and so on. And then, and then, as I said, a set of recommendations for the new director, they'll be different than the FICMAT recommendations. It won't be a reproduction of that, but Rick and I have both agreed that, based on our experience, that we'll be gathering a set of recommendations that will help the new director in the direction that the department needs to go, and some of the things that FICMAT has not been charged with looking at. So that's the present, and just, the present extends until July 1st, when my contract runs out. And I'm not interested in being in interim for another year, by the way.
Thank you, Dr. Hilton. Board comments or questions on this? We have public comment? Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Hilton. Members of the board, I have commendations. I'll speak their names because I only have three minutes, but, so, I have commendations. Debbie Keys Thomas, master teacher of my daughter's transition program at San Marcos, and the entire IEP team for my daughter, Emily Rose, who is in transition from high school to adult life. That would be Norm Clevenger, the principal, Ed Behrens, who came to her last IEP meeting, Sarah Sanchez, the tri-counties teacher, and I'm going to mention the other names that I want to commend, and then I'm going to go into my commendation, but I won't be able to get there. Maria Nielsen and Alan Hilton. So, I commend Maria Nielsen, who has been the special education administrative assistant for, I think, four or five years. She is always genuinely happy, professional, intelligent, and courteous. At the parent meeting and meet and greet with a niece, McNeil, at San Marcos, that was held on Yom Kippur, and I was told about it the day before, and was not expected to be there because I am Jewish, I looked at the woman who gave me the notice, and I said, I will be there. And Maria Nielsen was there, and she translated for the Spanish-speaking parents. She is an asset, and I hope you will give her a Christmas bonus and a raise. Barring that, I hope there's chocolate and wine for everybody that I have mentioned. I want to commend Debbie Keys Thomas. Debbie Keys Thomas and Mary DeSchmidt, I talked about when my daughter graduated, they were both master teachers, and they had a program called I-5 at San Marcos that was the saving grace of my family's life, but it was also a jewel in your crown. And it was disbanded, and it was totally unrecognized and unknown, but it is a model program for the nation. When you talk about a vision for special ed, you don't have to envision it, you just have to go look at master teacher Debbie Keys Thomas's program. What we're asking for...
20 seconds, Mrs. Smith.
I have many people I want to commend, I have many things I want to say. I know that the vision that Dr. Noel has talked about exists in Santa Barbara. Star King and the parent-child...
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. All right. We are running, of course, way behind, but I do want to go ahead and get to E1 at this time before we take a break, since we have so many parents here and staff members. I do think that this is important. So we're going to move now to E1, which is the approval of the recommendations by the fiscal crisis and management assistance team included in the preliminary report regarding proposed job descriptions.
What we're asking you to consider is the management structure proposed by FICMAT and job descriptions, and let me address some of the board's concerns about advertising and finding good people. The reality is, we're currently running late in starting to advertise and find the best people. It takes over three months to post a position, close the position, advertise the position, do the background checks, get them onboard. And for example, if we took an executive director position and we advertised now in mid-March, we would be closing the position in mid-May. Now, we could do a rush job on advertisement. Our past experience on that has been that if you go for the minimum six-week posting, you don't get the wealth of applicants. We would expect more applicants if we do a minimum two-month posting. We would close mid-May, and by the way, we would have the FICMAT report at the end of April, which would be time to follow up on that before we actually went into interviews because it takes about a two-week period to get the interview scheduled. a two-week period to get the interview schedules lined up, because you have to let these applicants know that we have an interview planned, and two weeks from today, we expect you to show up at this interview. So we'd be interviewing at the end of May or early June. We'd be finalizing early June, and we would hope that that person would then commit to us and be on board by the beginning of July. That's if we start right now. Anything later will delay that process. If we go to advertising directors' positions, we would definitely want this executive director to be in on the process of hiring directors. And we wouldn't want to do that in isolation, just say, "Oh, here are the two people we hired for you." And this would give us time in that visioning process. In general, we would want to delay that process by about a three-week period of time. And all of.
I'm sorry, by that, do you mean the difference between getting the executive positions out there for, for advertising, and then the elementary and secondary directors follow that three weeks later?
Yes, exactly. So, so that once we selected that executive director, we would say, "Now, in another week and a half or two weeks, we're, we're actually interviewing for directors, and we want you to play a major role in that interview process as well." So I think that gives you some sense of the timing involved here, and some sense of when we'd hear back from FIGMAT at the end of April with their final report. Now with that, I'd like Dr. Robertson to go over what we are proposing, drawn from the recommendations of FIGMAT, as the, as the job descriptions.
Thank you. As a result of the preliminary report on special education recommendations made by the FIGMAT group that you've heard about tonight, attached are some job descriptions that are being presented to you for your review and for your approval, the executive director of special ed and director of special education. There is a third certificated job description for program specialists, which we'll come back to you at a later date. It is not in tonight's packet, because I have the responsibility of being able to work with SBT to negotiate the language on that job description. So we will be doing that in the very near future. So that will come back to you at a later date. The particular design here is what we use for our administrative positions in terms of developing the job description. So there's some basic criteria that appears in there. You will find under the examples of duties listed in both positions that they pretty much follow exactly what FIGMAT recommended. The other outlying parts of it, like the assignment administrative relationships, are generic sort of comments that enhance and build upon the program. There also is usually included in the management qualification requirements, and then very specific required qualifications where one needs to have knowledge of and ability to perform various tasks and duties and assignments. So those are also spelled out. Education and experience is really key and important on here in terms of the level that we're looking for, the level in terms of degrees, background experience, education, and any kind of administrative service they've been able to do from two to five years or more. Somebody who's highly qualified and knows special education inside and out. So, and physical abilities are in there as well, because sometimes this position requires that you move around a lot. You've got to be able to drive wherever you need to go. You have long meetings. You meet with a lot of people. You have to have good communication skills. So there are some other things built within there. This is not an all-encompassing list. There certainly are some things that could be added to it. If you had some ideas or some further direction on that, I'd be happy to develop that. You will see on the director position, in support of the executive director position, the same outline and format is there, again with the recommendations from FIGMAT on the director position. And it's more finely tuned in to specific aspects of what the directors would do to support the executive director. And the, I have not identified it by elementary or secondary. That's not important in terms of the aspect of, of developing the job description. How we fly it will be important in terms of identifying somebody who has extensive elementary experience and someone who has extensive secondary experience, whether it be junior high or high school. So the format, again, is pretty much the same, the abilities, the knowledge of. You still need to have somebody who's knowledgeable about special education, practices, good people skills, and an in-depth understanding of how to work with all the issues that arise from that particular program and its services that it provides for our district. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Board members, any comments or questions, Mrs. Cordero?
I, I, I kind of raised the similar question the last time we were dealing with a job description in special ed. And I'm always concerned under the physical abilities, the extent to which all of these are, are absolutely required. For example, I'm, I'm looking at the one, the ability to, to reach above the shoulders and horizontally to retrieve files for extended periods of time. And then I'm wondering if there isn't some way of a comment, there isn't some kind of accommodation that we could provide to someone who couldn't reach, for example, above their head in order to have files either retrieved for them or placed at a level at which they could reach. The same thing with visual ability to read a computer screen and hearing sufficient to communicate in person or hold telephone conversations at normal levels. The person has, for example, an interpreter or assistive technology. I'm wondering the extent to which this is an absolute requirement. And I see that in a number of places in terms of, you know, we could argue with some of these, but those are the ones that I really particularly thought, in light of the fact that we're talking about special education, that we don't want to be too restrictive to the people who can apply for this position.
Your point's taken, Ms. Cordero, and I remember you did say that last time. This is, and this is not, again, an all-encompassing list, and these are not necessarily requirements. They're general abilities asked for in, in a lot of districts on this. Perhaps FIGMAT, when they come back next week, if I have a moment, can perhaps advise me on that particular area and look at how might, we might be able to word that a little more appropriately. Thank you.
Perhaps we could asterisk those with something like ability to accommodate for disability.
Well, even the general heading could say physical, physical abilities, comma, with or without accommodation. And that would just cover everything.
We, we can make that change.
Something like that.
Right. I mean, we don't want to preclude someone who's in a wheelchair from applying for this job.
Right.
No.
Any other comments, Mrs. Seakin?
My other question centered around, I understand we're being asked to approve the job descriptions here, but I just want to make sure that doesn't necessarily mean that we're locking ourselves into necessarily putting forward all three of these jobs, per se. Is that, is that a correct assessment?
Well, at this point, we would be asking you to approve the FIGMAT recommendations for the administrative positions, executive director, and two directors, and approve the job descriptions.
But would we later have the ability to say we decided we only want to hire one director as opposed to two directors?
If, if you want to move forward on just one director position, then please tell us that now.
Although the reality is, we could always, if we haven't hired somebody, we could always pull something back. But Dr. Noel?
Yes. One thing to add to the job description, then a question about the job description. I would think that we would want the executive director to be thoroughly conversant with RTI and the research base as well as implementation. RTI means responsive intervention. It's not the law.
It also means refusal to identify. [laughter] And professional, inprofessional?
Kate, Kate.
No.
Okay. My, now, my, my comment, that was good.
There was.
My, my comment. My comment about the job description itself, I have never been clear, when we approve a job description, are we approving, are we authorizing you to hire? Or is it a separate thing? So we have this description on the books, okay. Maybe someday we'll recruit for it. Is this, are these the same thing?
Well, that's what I'm asking you to decide.
Okay.
So I'd like you to be explicit about that.
Thank you very much.
Approving the job description is one, but I would also like your approval to go ahead with the executive director position, and I would say, follow the recommendations of FIGMAT at this point, two directors. Go ahead.
I, I would, I just, I wonder if we can proceed step at a time and start with, with, and, you know, vote on each, vote on them separately.
You'd like to make three separate motions, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. I mean, I would like to start with a motion to, to approve the job description or authorize the recruitment for the executive director position.
As amended, with the proposed amendments?
With this amendment.
Well, you said that you wanted to add knowledgeable about response.
Yes, 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 as amended.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for the discussion on this one. Is there public comment that we haven't taken? Okay, well done.
The motion.
Mm-hmm.
We're looking first at the executive director.
All right. The motion is to approve the proposed job description for the executive director of special education with the understanding that this position would be opened with amendments added about physical abilities and about response to intervention.
Yeah.
And there's a motion and a second.
And to authorize recruitment.
And to authorize recruitment, yes.
Period.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next, then, we would look at the approval of the director of special education position. That's two positions, one for elementary and one for secondary. Comments or a motion? Everybody's having a little bit more difficulty with this one. Here's one question that I have for, for administrators here. It says, this one, it says $80,000 impact on the general fund, although what FIGMAT has said is that it's not necessarily this position in particular, it's spread over a number of positions.
I need to apologize. I wanted to make it very clear to the board what an executive director position was going to cost the district. And I met with Dr. Robertson, and we costed that, salaries plus benefits. It's $138,000 to the district.
Okay. One of my questions is, special education administrators, can they be funded through special education categorical monies?
I'm not knowledgeable of that particular aspect. Mr. Smith, can I answer that?
Mr. Smith.
Yeah, but since you have such a large encroachment.
I know, I know that it, it ends up having an effect on the general fund.
Absolutely.
But it would, especially given that we are anticipating a greater amount of money from the federal government for special education.
Care to be funded through that? Sure.
Could it be funded through that?
If those dollars actually ended up being in our coffers, absolutely.
Okay. But aren't those one-time funds, the, the federal monies?
Well, that's still, it's a two-time, it's a two-year appropriation. Whether it's extended beyond that, we'll have to see.
So it's a two-year appropriation, and then presumably if the funding isn't there, we could absorb it or else, or else eliminate it if we simply don't have funding for it or it hasn't worked out. Any other comments?
Yeah, we should, we should all be.
Yes, Dr. Noel, sorry.
We should be mindful, and, and Mr. Smith will explain it, that I think we should be mindful in our thinking about this, about the maintenance of effort rule. Because whatever we do, it's pretty hard to back off on it. If you, if you hire too many, you can't get rid of them. Am I sort of, sort of right, or?
Well, maintenance of effort really deals with level of expense. So, I mean, you could have this, maintenance of, and I'll let the experts really talk about this, this is not my subject of expertise, but basically, you have to spend this year what you spent last year, unless, I think there's like five exemptions, declining enrollment among your special ed population, basically, high-cost students that have moved out of the area. Things like that are, are basically some of the, you know, exemptions or exceptions to that maintenance of effort rule. But if you're asking me, if you hire administrative positions and you basically raise your maintenance of effort, do you have to keep hiring those people? It's not, it's not that specific. It's you have to hire or you have to basically maintain the same level of expense on special ed expenditure. So that could be distributed across certificated and classified employees, so.
And Dr. Hilton, did you want to address that?
Yes, just a, a brief little bit. One of the other exemptions or exceptions is the layoff or caused by restructuring or restructuring of a position, so, or positions. So that would fit into, you know, getting you out of a maintenance of effort issue.
Let me give you an idea of what some districts do. As total staff expenditure is increased by, say, a 3% salary increase, if two positions are laid off, many districts can still maintain their, or show their maintenance of effort. I mean, they still have an overall expenditure that's higher.
Mr. Heron?
Yes. I would make the motion that we approve the job description for the director of special education and authorize the advertising for, for the position to follow behind the position for executive director by at least three weeks. And that we don't hire one or two direct, we don't hire two directors until we have an executive director in place.
All right. Is there a second for that motion? Mrs. Cordero?
I'll second.
Right. Any further discussion on that? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
That passes for one. And at this point, we will take a break. We will take a 10-minute break instead of a 15-minute break. So please be back here in a timely manner. We are moving on to E2, but we need Mrs. Sawaski up here to, who's trapped in the back of the room.
Oh, thank God. Save schools. Save my skin.
Now, now you have two weeks to read those, Bob.
All right. So we are in E2, which is the approval of elementary district inter-district attendance board policy 5117A and board policy and administrative regulation 5117B.
He's in your packet there. And I think the one thing I want to say is that we tried very hard to be as specific as we could. I won't read the policy because you do have it, but just the first part about making it very clear that this is the allowance of inter-district transfers into the Santa Barbara Elementary School District. And because of negative fiscal impacts, the Santa Barbara Elementary School District does not accept inter-district transfer students, except in the following limited cases. And this is directly from your action last, last board meeting. Students who are children of district employees, students in the fifth grade during the 2008, 2009 may be granted inter-district transfer to attend the sixth grade in the 2009, 2010 academic year, and siblings of approved inter-district transfer students who are permitted to attend sixth grade in the 2009, 2010 academic school year, and may be granted, may be granted an inter-district transfer the 2009, 2010 school year only. So that one year. So those incoming sixth graders and their siblings. Another thing that we worked on is the extraordinary hardship exemption, and we tried to define what that would be by what it's not. And you can see the definitions there. So that I'm not sitting here reading it to you, and you all have it, and you've had time to look at it, I think we should just move forward. You know that the second board policy, 5117B, is for the Santa Barbara High School District, and that is very similar to the current inter-district attendance policy with the, the first paragraph noting that the admission of inter-district transfer students to the Santa Barbara High School District does not negatively impact the district financially in the same manner as inter-district transfers in the Santa Barbara Elementary School District. And so there's very little change there. So, questions, comments?
All right. Board members, shall we take public comment first? And we're going to close to public comment at this time. So, yes, Dr. Noel?
I would, I would like to suggest that on the elementary one, we get rid of because of negative fiscal impact.
Well, Dr. Noel, could we just hear the public comment on this first? Because we actually do have one.
I was trying to insert you.
I was trying to insert you, I thought you said you just closed them.
I was closing to new ones, but we do have one left. So let's listen to its, thank you.
Mrs. Smith?
Because of the basic aid status, inter-district transfers have now become an issue. Inter-district transfers are contingent on a boundary line map. I was disqualified because on an ancient map made in 1890, my residence is outside of the school district boundary line. The problem is, now that there are no inter-district transfers into the district, especially in the elementary school district, what you will find is all of Gibraltar Road, including houses that have been burned down and houses that are for sale, now are in the college school district elementary and the Santi Inez High School District. They do not therefore have a school district because Santi Inez has said to the state, to the district, and to the school district organization committee that they cannot provide free and appropriate education for those people who live five minutes from Roosevelt, yet they are an hour and a half from their school. It is insanity. And so.
Okay, Mrs. Smith, do you have something that addresses this policy in particular?
Well, yes, you have a policy that everyone will have to either be in the district or out of the district. And I am out of the district. I do not have an inter-district transfer, yet my child is at San Marcos and has been in this school district without a district transfer for 10 years. It was adjudicated that I am in the district and yet I don't have a district transfer. All of those people who are being thrown out of OAS, can they point to me and say, she doesn't have an inter-district transfer and yet she is a student enrolled in this school by virtue of a letter from Norman Clevenger that says, you're in, you're ours, and that's set? Now, can they look at me and say, well, our school is at Hope School, and she didn't have to have a district to be in the district? Can they use my very bizarre situation and the fact that Gibraltar Road is illegal? It's illegal. There's a leapfrogging prohibition, education code 35443, please write it down, so that you can correct a problem.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
And inter-district transfers.
Okay, board members, let's deal first with 5117A. Comments about that one? Dr. Noel, I actually got started on the first.
Yeah, I simply wanted to delete because of negative fiscal impacts. I'm starting with the Santa Barbara district.
And Mr. Price, do you want to address that?
Yes, thank you. The reason that that language is in there is because of the fact that you will wind up with two very different policies for each of the two districts. And in order for that to be a valid distinction, in order for it not to be viewed potentially as arbitrary, doing it one way in one district and another in another district, the reason for the differentiation preferably should be included in the policy.
All right, thank you. Board members, Mr. Heron?
I see a, one issue, we're being asked to do this tonight and waive the normal two hearings. And the fact that there is nobody here on an issue that generated so much heat two weeks ago, either everybody pulled a tent and left and accepted our decision two weeks ago, or the fact that they heard about it about 1:00 yesterday after they went to the website, I just wonder why nobody's here. And so, unless you can tell me.
Well, we did say at the last meeting that it would be on at the next meeting, and we also said that it would be an action item at the next meeting.
But we also said, as part of the vote last night, the board also agreed to develop an appeal policy to allow some families to apply for an exemption and keep children at their current schools. Also, to be Hester Heron and fellow board member Cordero, the board voted to establish an appeal process for impacted families through which, on a case-by-case basis, some pupils may be read, readmitted. Now, when we, the day after or two days after the meeting, we got a note with a Carmel Unified School District is the most comprehensive and from Craig's perspective, the most appropriate. Now, in the discussion two weeks ago, I tried very hard to keep the word hardship out of the motion. And I thought I was successful, but apparently not, because we come back with extraordinary hardship. I thought we were getting some sensitivity and some, you know, some kindness into the process, but the Carmel Unified School District, I mean, I found this very interesting. There had been only a couple exemptions over the past decade due to extreme circumstances in their district because of physical safety. The policy has served us well in Carmel. We've only had one appeal in more than a decade. The policy in front of us, Mrs., Dr. Sawaski said it very clearly, it spells out what it doesn't cover, and there is no way, under the circumstances, that anybody, what you've done is, you've taken every piece of correspondence we got and said, okay, how can we block this person? And you put them in here. I just think that what you've done is you've cut everybody out who complained and put in here why they're not going to qualify. I don't think that was the intent of, you know, I didn't think we were making it extraordinary hardship. I, I believe in basic aid 100%. I want us to go there. I wanted us to go there with some kindness. I will have a motion, amendment to a motion, because there's one thing that, that I talked about two weeks ago that you didn't include here. So at least whenever we pass a motion, I would try to get one, you know, one little thing in there.
And did you want to give a few, maybe before board members have other questions, can you give an example or two of what would? Because obviously, if it's not because of the special characteristics of a school, or childcare, or employment, transportation, or separation or divorce, do you have some samples, Mrs. Cordero?
I was just going to say, we have the list in the, in the board policy, documented severe and exceptional financial, educational, safety, or health impact on the student or an immediate family member of the student. So, I mean, we haven't spelled out specifically what that might be, but that, that statement of what a hard, an extraordinary hardship would be does come before the paragraph on what would not qualify as extraordinary hardship. And I just want to clarify that I had agreed to take that word out, just.
And it was taken out?
It was taken out, out of the motion. But it was certainly my intent, and I think it was very clear in the comments that I made, that I, I do think it should be a hardship exemption and not just an exemption because people want to attend a particular school that undermines the whole purpose of having, of changing the inter-district transfer policy.
All right, any other comments on, just on BP 5117A?
Can I ask one question?
Sure, Mr. Heron.
I just want to make sure, Mrs. Cordero, you did agree that hardship should not be in the motion from two weeks ago?
I agreed to support the motion as it was stated without the word hardship in it.
Thank you.
I would have actually preferred to have hardship in it, but I preferred to support it without it. I agreed to.
Mrs. Deacon?
I have just a kind of a practical question. Maybe Mr. Price might be able to answer this. If, if an appeal is, is denied at this, at our board level and it goes to the county education office, do they use our policy to make their decision, or do they act upon a policy they have of their own?
The level of discretion that the county board of education has is not defined in the education code. However, as a matter of practice, they ordinarily, and in all instances that I'm aware of, look to the standards that are established by the district. So, for example, if you were to simply include in your policy provision that there's an appeal without specifying any standards, in other words, without defining how wide you want to make the crack for exceptional cases, then by the time that an application would be acted upon, first by staff, and then there could be an appeal to your board of education, and thereafter, a further appeal to the county board of education, the county board would have no standards to go on other than to use their own discretion. Well, does this feel to us like a situation where it would be beneficial for the family to be able to have their child go to the Santa Barbara School District, for example? And in one sense, you would be giving up your discretion to another body because you hadn't set the rules. So obviously, it's up to your board to decide how wide you want the cracks open and to define the language that you wish to use. But however you wish to do it, my legal advice to you is to define it so that asset is applied both by your staff, yourself, and the county board of education. There can be consistency, and I think that's beneficial for the community to know, too.
All right, any other comments just on the language of BP 5117A, Mrs. Cordero?
I just had a quick question. Mr. Price, you reviewed this document. Do you think that this defines it clearly enough?
Yes, I do. You can only go so far in establishing a standard which still provides an opportunity for an appeal under circumstances that cannot clearly be predicted in advance. And I think that this provides an adequate description to guide, if, if this is language that your board is comfortable with, you're the decision maker. But I think it provides clear delineation to the staff, reminder to yourself what your policy is when you hear appeals, and direction to the county board of education as to what your policy is for this district and therefore what they ought to do in reviewing the matter.
Thank you.
All right, let's talk about 5117B. Dr. Noel?
I had, I had a question about the previous one.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. The term extraordinary hardship has no definition except a reference to medical or similar reasons. And the implication also that, that the statement has to be from a physician or provider, or other provider. Do I understand correctly, then, that there's, it's only something that's medical?
In the very first paragraph under extraordinary hardship, it's defined as a documented severe and exceptional financial, educational, safety, or health impact. It's on the first page.
Very first page, page 104.
Very first page.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
So it does, on the, the part you were reading just further defined the, the medical piece as far as the documentation.
Okay, 5117B. Mrs. Deacon?
Should it say Santa Barbara High School District there, just under students?
Yes.
Yes, it should. Thank you.
Any other comments on, yes, Mr. Heron?
In number seven, there's a word "and" just hanging out there.
I'm sorry, where's number seven?
Oh, on the AR.
I'm not on the AR yet, I'm just on the BP.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, we're going to move on to the AR if no other comments. All right, AR, number seven, there's an "and."
I'm not sure the "and" should be there. This is a list of seven or eight items.
You know, this is, this is connecting the "and" to number eight.
They don't make sense together, do they?
That's, that's how a lot of ARs board policies are written. When you have the last one, even though it's numbered, it has an "and."
What's?
It connects.
The president just said they connect the two.
Well, it means your, your list. So, when recommended, when there is a valid "and" based upon presentation of satisfactory evidence. So that's, that's why that's there. Any other comments on AR 5117B?
Can I just ask a quick question? The reason there's no AR for 5117A is because that's, that wouldn't be written until after we approve the policy?
Well, we talked about the fact that the BP, the reason we did the BP with no AR is that the BP itself is very comprehensive and that includes many of the details that would normally be in an AR. And because this is very specific to this year, we think this suits this right now. And obviously, we're going to be updating it at some point soon. And at that point, you know, and who knows how the high school district will go with it, with the basic aid status and all, we could soon be with the same thing in both.
That was one of my questions, too.
Okay, Mr. Heron?
On the, you talked about AR. In AR 5111 dot one, there still is that says, in addition, district residency status may be granted to a student if at least one parent guardian is physically employed within the district boundaries. What takes precedent, that document or the one we're going to vote on tonight?
And maybe, Mr. Price, you want to address that?
Which number was that, Mr. Heron?
Well, well, I'm talking, right now, in 5111 dot one, it says employment can be considered.
District residency. It's not one that's being put before us tonight.
But it is one that you have looked at.
But, but in, in the one we, in the elementary school.
It's not one that you have.
We say that employment is not a factor, but yet we have an AR that says it is.
But maybe you need to read the exact sentence because it says it may be.
Okay, to, to try and answer your question, after we worked on these policies, understanding the importance of bringing them back to you promptly so that notification could be given to the parents, we looked at the district residency policies, and we saw that there were changes that could be made that I think staff will want to bring back to you down the road. But we didn't want to try and rush through too much at once. And in my view, I felt and feel that, for the time being, the district residency policies are adequate and will suffice and comply with the law. If a student is admitted because of the employment of their parents, and that's allowable in the high school district, but it will not be in the elementary district except if the parent happens to be an employee of the district. Under the education code, if a child is admitted because of the parent's employment, that child becomes deemed an inter-district transfer. Now, I don't know if, if that partially answered your question, but there's a link there.
All I'm saying is we have an AR that talks about employment being, you know, may be a district resident. But we now have a board policy that says inter-district transfer will not be granted because of employment within the district.
Okay.
To me, you have two very contradictory statements there.
All right. First of all, as I recall, and I don't have the residency policy in front of me or the AR, it says "may." And for any of these transfers, the policies have always in the past said "may." It's discretionary. I believe that there is a further sentence in that administrative regulation, if not in the board policy, that says that in the event that there are something like adverse financial consequences associated with allowing someone into the district on account of their parent's employment, it can be denied. And if you see that, then, and if I'm correct, then that satisfied me. And if you see that, and if I'm correct, then that satisfied me that there is leeway to have the practice under that section be consistent with the new policy for the elementary district, until there's time to do a further and a more comprehensive review and revise those so that they're going to be clear long into the future.
I would hope we would look at that one particularly. Again, I'm going to have an amendment on this board policy also. I don't want us to get into the same situation two, three years ago, two years from now, where all of a sudden, we wake up and we have to go through this with the high schools as far as basic aid. And I'm going to suggest that if we do anything, if we just simply in BP 5117B, under terms and conditions, that's on, I'm sorry.
Do you mean on the AR?
I mean AR, where it says, "Inter-district attendance agreement shall be submitted for renewal each school year." That we add in fourteen-point cap, inter-district attendance policies are subject to change at any time, and there is no assurance that any agreement will be renewed. I would like to start telling parents right now that, you know, they need to be aware that it may change in the high school district, too.
I would certainly be happy to have that added to the board policy, sorry, AR 5117B. I actually have one more addition to that as well. I had not realized that our existing AR on inter-districts transfers did not reference the deadlines. And so, my one sentence to add, after the first sentence, but before Mr. Herron's addition, is, "Transfer application deadlines are the same as established deadlines for intra-district transfers." It's under terms and conditions, so the first sentence would stay the same, then my sentence, "Transfer application deadlines are the same as established deadlines for intra-district transfers," followed by Mr. Herron's sentence.
I'm sorry. We would start with the sentence, "Inter-district attendance agreements shall be submitted," et cetera.
Yes.
And then your sentence.
About the deadlines, and then Mr. Herron's sentence about the fact that they may not be approved. Okay, I will do that. All right. So, we have three proposed changes here. Board policy 5117A, board policy 5117B, and AR 5117B.
Let me read my, this probably should be done by an amendment because I don't think it's going to pass, so.
Oh, this is for the first BP?
Right. But you never know. And it doesn't really fit our attorney's definition of being specific, but I didn't know that when I came in here. I wanted to add on BP 5117A, at the end of the third paragraph under extraordinary on page 104, "However, for 2009-2010, inter-district transfer applications, the superintendent is authorized to consider a student's family attendance history. The long-term history based on consecutive years of attendance in the districts by the student or siblings of the student may be taken into consideration when deciding whether or not to grant an exception."
All right. I'm going to ask for that to be a form of a motion to add that specifically. Is there a second?
A second, but I would ask the mover if he would accept a small change in wording. However, for the year, for 2009-10, inter-district transfer applications, the superintendent shall consider a student's family attendance history.
I don't know, Mr. Price, if you want to chime in before we take the vote on this about the effects of doing something like this.
I think it's entirely up to the board.
Okay. And Dr. Sarvis?
Well, I would like to say that significantly changes the decision that was made at the last meeting. I mean, it really bases it on a student's family attendance history, and maybe that's obvious to the board. I just wanted to state it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I didn't.
He didn't accept my proposal.
I mean, I don't want to put, I don't want to, I mean, maybe, I didn't want to make it mandatory. I wanted it to be one of the factors that, in an application, he could look at.
Well, I'm saying we shall consider. I didn't say decide one way or another. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, fine.
All right. So, now we do have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All right. All those in favor? Nope. Mrs. Cordero, you want to chime in?
I'm sorry. I'm just a little bit confused, and I'm going to vote against this amendment anyway, so I'm not sure it needs a lot of discussion. But I'm confused because it says, it still says, "When deciding whether or not to grant an exemption," but it doesn't change what we allow exemptions for. So, it just says, "You can think about the student's family history when you're deciding whether they have a severe exceptional financial, educational, safety, or health impact."
Yeah. I'm just saying that, in the scheme of things, look at it, and, you know, I go back to my, I'm just trying to get back to my point of two weeks ago, is that, is that we have families who have supported our educational system for years that are going to be possibly, and I just want this to be a factor, there's going to be, there's going to be a laundry list of reasons possibly why there should be an exemption, and if this happens to be one of them, it should be looked at.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. It fails three, two. All right. So, we have proposed language for the two board policies and the high school district AR. Is there a motion to accept the language, aside from this particular sentence that Mr. Herron wanted added? He has made other proposals. Everybody seems to have acceded to those. Is there a motion?
Madam President, excuse me. You may want to have the maker of the motion accompany it with a vote to waive the second reading.
All right.
Well, I will move that we adopt, do you want them in separate motions?
No, not separate motions. I motion altogether this point.
So, I move that we adopt board policy 5117A and B, and AR 5117B, with the two agreed upon additions, the language about policies are, the policies are subject to change at any time, et cetera, and the sentence about the transfer deadlines, and that we waive the second reading on these three.
And that any typos be corrected.
And that any typos be corrected.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Herron?
Yeah. I'm going to vote for the motion because I think it's mandatory that we go forward. I'm just hoping that the people who aren't here, I'm just hoping they're not here for the right reason. And I think it's, I mean, the whole idea of a second reading is public discussion, and I'm not sure we had it. I mean, we had it two weeks ago, and maybe that's all we need. But I'm just hoping that by rushing it, it doesn't make us look like we tried to do something quickly for the sake of doing something quickly.
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
And one abstention. All right. So, it passes four, zero, with one abstention. We will now move on to item E3, the approval of positive certification of the 0809 second interim financial report.
And Derek Smith, our Deputy Superintendent, will present this.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. As the board knows, the board's required to certify twice a year financial interim reports. First interim report, which is basically a snapshot of our expenditures and revenue as of October 31st, must be submitted to the board by December 15th, and certified at that point. Our second interim financial report, which basically tracks our expenditures and revenues from July 1 through January 31st, must be before the board by March 15th. At that point in time, the board must certify one of three certifications, either a positive, which is basically that the board can meet its current subsequent two-year fiscal obligations, a qualified certification, that they may not be able to meet their current subsequent two-year fiscal obligations, or a negative, which is, we can definitely not meet our current and subsequent two-year obligations. I'm happy to say that we're recommending a positive certification. Implicit in that positive certification is that we can maintain adequate reserves. As you know, the state recommended reserve level is 3%. We're far and above that at this point in time. However, we're going to take you through a process here that basically not only looks at the current year, but also looks at what's going on in a multi-year basis, and we're going to probably, through that process, identify what the amount of expenditure reductions we're going to have to make this spring to go into 8, 9, or actually, 9, 10, I'm sorry, and 10, 11, and basically weather the current economic storm. So, what I'd like to do is turn your attention to the booklet here. We issued an errata page as a result of our board president finding what some would call a footing error, and as a result of that, we also changed from using Word to Excel for these tables in the future, and that'll be reflected here. I wanted to note something that might not be clearly evident to the board. One of the reasons that we do this compare, side-by-side comparison between first and second interim, and then we do this narrative that looks at second interim versus adopted budget, is because our financial system, when it drops it into SACS, which is the standardized account code structure forms in the back, only allows us to use the adopted budget as the base year, even though the board has adopted a first interim report, and that becomes their budget, it supersedes the adopted. We can't do a comparison in the SACS form between the first and second. We can only do between the board adopted and first, or board adopted and second. So, as a result of that, we do a side-by-side comparison between first and second, so you can kind of, you have both to look at. And I know it's kind of confusing. We're going to be talking to CECC about whether we can straighten out and make that consistent, but at this point, we don't have that capability. So, in any event, what we like to do is, on page five, is we walk you through kind of the variances. As you know, these variances are looking at second interim report versus adopted budget, so it's not as meaningful as if you looked at between first and second interim. I'm probably not going to bore you a lot with this. They're pretty self-explanatory, and look very similar to what you saw at first interim report. If you move over to page seven, we show not only a pie chart in terms of how our general fund unrestricted and restricted revenues are distributed, but we also show you kind of a table of our enrollment in ADA, and basically a projection. The projections have been rebentched because of, one, if you, and I'll talk a little bit about this during our multi-year projection process, our kindergarten did not come in at what we estimated, so we kind of rebent that. And then also, the projections in the elementary also reflect the decrease of inner districts, and we extrapolate that out into the future. So, that's markedly different than what you saw at first interim, and so you're seeing that declining enrollment, you know, more significantly accentuated in the elementary, where you didn't see that at first interim. We saw a slight uptick. So, when you project that out, that's what you look at. On page eight, we show kind of a historical trend, how ADA is tracked against enrollment, and also what we expect to happen in the future. You can also see what our revenue limits are with the current deficit level. As you can see right now, there's a 7.844% deficit on the revenue limit, and so that yields us about 5,379.81 in the elementary, 6,460.90 in the high school district. And you can also see, if you divide that into 180, you can see what we lose on a daily attendance basis when students don't show up to school. Now, remember, as long as you operate under revenue limit, that'll be true, but you're going to move into a point where that's only going to be true in the secondary district, and attendance is going to be an educational goal rather than a financial goal in the elementary district. As we move on to page 10, we present this, general fund categories, expenditures by category, and also unrestricted general fund expenditures by category. And then SACS allows us to do it by functions, which is kind of an activity grouping, and that shows you a pie chart distribution, basically looking at general administration, plant services, debt service, direct instruction, pupil services by function. As we move on to page 12, I think somebody earlier didn't like when I used the word encroachment, but this shows our encroachment, which is basically our contribution from the unrestricted general fund to restricted programs because the restricted programs don't have enough restricted funding to carry themselves. And as you can see, the biggest one here is special ed. You know, we have a $16,689,000 budget. We contribute from the unrestricted general fund, $7,604,697. And so, if you look at that, you know, that's about 46.2% of the total special ed budget. The other issues or other encroachments that we have are significant, is the routine restrictive maintenance account, which is kind of a quasi-encroachment in the sense that we made a commitment to the state, once we decided to accept state school facilities dollars, that we would budget 3% of our general fund expenditures for routine maintenance. And we basically have to basically adhere to that covenant with the state for 20 years from the last date of an apportionment we get from the state. So, as you know, the state's given us flexibility to reduce that from 3% to 1% through 13, 14. At this point, we haven't had any discussions about that, but it's also obviously something that'll be relevant in our flexibility discussions. Another thing that we did this interim reporting period, which is significantly different than the first interim, is we showed K3 class size reduction. And K3 class size reduction is technically an unrestricted program, but it's a significantly underfunded program. And what this shows you, and probably the best way to look at it, it's on page 13, is the revenue we get and then the expense of operating it. Now, if you eliminated the program, you would not get that amount of savings because that reflects all the mature teachers in those K3 spots. And if you eliminated the program, that's not who would be laid off. So, there's, you know, but it is useful in terms of taking a snapshot, in terms of how costly that program actually is. If we move down page 13, you can see the other contributions. Oh, I'm sorry. No.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to, you said on page 13?
Yes.
When we look at K3 class size reduction, we could see the amount that we get and then what the general fund.
Oh, you know, I'm not showing.
We only have, I think we only have the contribution.
Yeah, actually, you do on that side. Page two.
Page two would be where we, okay.
Yeah. So, there you can see on page two, the $2,623,168 is the revenue we get.
Okay.
And you can see that the cost of the teachers, you know, the teachers that we have now, spread across those K3 cohort, is, it's significant. It's.
Okay. Thank you.
Eight point one million dollars.
So, may I ask you, are you saying that these numbers should be combined, so the actual cost is over 10 million? Okay. So, 8 million is just our portion of it.
Yeah. That's just the expense side of it. So, in any event, then you see that we make a contribution to Community Day of 223,719. We get special ed funding both from the federal government and the state government, and the way we do it in this district is we break it out by those special ed resources, and we show the contributions, both from the federal and state funding sources. You see also the contributions for home-to-school transportation and special ed transportation. There's the contribution to routine restrictive maintenance account. And then when you go down where it says funds, those are actually inter-fund transfers that we make to those funds. And so, you know, we make a dollar-for-dollar matching share contribution to deferred maintenance in most years, not this year, in the elementary. And so, anytime we have to move money out of the general fund to another fund, we have to do it via inter-fund transfer. These aren't truly encroachments, except for the cafeteria fund, which at some day in the future, we hope to be self-supporting, but as you can see, that we're contributing $383,000 to support that program. And there was a slight uptick from first to second interim. And if you look at the bottom of page 12, 61,604, and it was really, really relative to the fact that meal reimbursements have decreased at the state and federal level in the cost of food. So, it's not that they're not doing a good job, but almost everything's going against them. So, that's an important consideration. These next couple of graphs.
Hold on just a moment, Mrs. Cordero.
Can I ask you one more quick question?
Sure.
On the bottom, the retiree benefit fund?
Yes.
Is that separate from GASBY?
Well, you know, our retiree benefit fund is separate than, let me put it this way. We have a lot of, we have some that we pay for, and then we have a lot of self-pay retirees that people purchase, and it all flows through there. So, in a true sense, usually, G- So in a true sense, usually GASB is a post-retirement benefit where the district is obligated, and ours is kind of co-mingled with some of each. And actually, there's a significant population of what I call self-pay retirees. Okay? So then when we go to page 14, I love these two graphs, okay? And page 14 shows you as, what I would usually.
I don't like them at all.
Well, I'll explain why it looks so odd, is that basically page 14 shows you whether you have an operational surplus or an operational deficit. And what I mean by that, are you bringing in more revenue than expense, or is more expense than revenue? And you can see in the years that it goes up above that center line, that means you have an operational surplus. You see eight, nine that we're burning down, okay? But why do we have this aberration here? Well, nine, 10, if you read through, you talk about us, or you'll see that we sweep the ending balances, and then also, we're taking 30 percent of those tier-three categoricals. So we have an anomaly, we have a spike. So if you didn't have that, you would see it would step down proportionally, and you could see, you know, in 10, 11, if we don't do anything, we're in a world of hurt. But what it does show you is by using those, what I would call craftsmanship mechanism, it's buying us time. So then when you move over to 15, it shows you the district reserves and net ending balance, and as you can see, you know, we've tiered that, where we have restricted in yellow, and you can see our plan is to burn down restricted dollars, because we're going to have flexibility. And then unrestricted is in blue. And the reason the parcel tax is in magenta there is because we're showing it in the ending balance, we haven't distributed it in the budget, because we haven't had any meetings with the oversight committee, so it's not distributed up in the budget, meaning the ones, twos, threes, fours, fives, sevens for nine, 10, and 10 and 11. Once we have certainty there, we'll distribute it. Right now, it's just sitting in the ending balance, but we didn't want the ending balance to be camouflaged or overstated, because parcel tax dollars under CSEM are technically unrestricted, even though they're quasi-restricted because of the covenant with the community. So as we move through the other funds, you know, there's nothing really significant. You'll see that in the capital funds, like deferred maintenance building funds, capital facilities funds, we show operational deficits, which is typical in project funds, because you basically usually don't have an ongoing revenue source, and you're burning down some kind of one-time amount, even though it might not be all shown here. And then as we move through up to page 28, I think Meg's going to come up and talk a little bit about the multi-year projection. And as you can tell, we use, you know, the School Services of DART board, the most recent one. And you can see on page 30, when we rebent the kindergarten, I just used a one-year trend rather than a three-year, because when we had a three-year, we were showing the kindergartens were going to be about 700, but we came nowhere near that. So I basically just went with the one-year, extrapolated that out, rebentched our projections, and then we factored in, taken out the 181, and rolled it forward. So that's why you're seeing the elementary, you know, it's like we artificially accelerated the decline, and so that's what it reflects. So I'm going to turn it over to Meg, and she's going to talk a little bit about the multi-year, and then we'll talk about what we need to do.
Good evening. So I want to start off by looking at page 107. It's the unrestricted of the multi-year projections. And on line 16, which is your total revenue, I wanted to point out between the.
107.
107.
Sorry. We're almost there. All right. Everybody up to 107? Everybody have their magnifying glasses on?
That's why I have my glasses on. So I would like to compare the three years, 08, 09, 9, 10, and 10, 11 on the revenue side. As you can see, you know, at first glance, when you look at 79 million, and then you go to eight, nine, 10, you look at 80 million, you're saying, no, that's not too bad, even though we had a 13 percent deficit. However, I want to point out that the two lines right above that 80 million are, is a contribution line that decreases by about a million and a half, and that is where we put the $2 million sweep that we planned to do for eight, nine into that, because it's hard to do this, you can't really budget for that yet. We got the information so late for eight, nine, but we put it as a placeholder, so we just threw it in against the contribution. So the $2 million sweep is in there.
Everybody see where you should be? You're down at line, in the second section, and there's line eight, nine, and then the total sum is line 11, you're in the middle, B section expenditures and other financing uses.
Oh, in the middle of B?
Yes.
No, no, we're on the top.
You're in the middle of the page, on B.
No, we're on A.
It's up in revenues.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
We're in the revenue area.
Is it line four, is that it?
We're on A, A section 1, 4, or 1, 5, actually.
Yeah, sorry, so that's the two and a half million.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you're saying in that 10 million is the two and a half million.
Right. What we have, we have about a 7 percent increase on the encroachment every year. So what I did is I increased the prior year encroachment by seven years, which is this year, eight, nine, by 7 percent, and then I took out $2 million. Because that's what we averaged.
So Meg, if you didn't take that out, it would have been the 11, 2, 3, 2 in column A times 1.07.
That's correct.
But you backed out the 2 million relative to the sweep, and that's what improves your fund balance.
So our fund balance would have been about $2 million less than what we're showing there. Also, in line just above the 10 million, that 4.5 million holds the parcel tax. Okay? I just wanted to point that out. And then, as you notice in 10, 11, you'll see that the contribution, the negative 12 millions, 8, 6, actually goes back to, because we will not have that $2 million sweep for the next year. We've, as you saw in Eric's graph, it's gone. The restricted fund, ending fund balance is basically gone for eight, nine.
And that's a good test of reasonableness. If you look at C, the net increase, see how we're burning down in A, but then we get a, this is all on the unrestricted side, but then it's a positive, the eight, seven, and then it goes way negative. So it reflects the graph perfectly, it mirrors it. And that's, that's why, that's the numbers that are driving the graph.
So I'd like to take you down to the other adjustment line in section B, which is in the certificated expenditures, certificated salaries. That's, that negative 9, 7, 5 equates to about 11 and a half FTEs. This is roughly about what we would have lost with the, relating to the release of 181 ADA, plus the initial 44 that we missed on the, on the projection for kindergarten.
Yeah, so one of the things you'll see that's already contemplated in the projections is that both the FTEs relative to the rescission of the inner districts and any attrition relative to declining enrollment is already contemplated. And that's important, because when we get to talk about the number, I just want that to be explicit.
So that also includes the secondary declining.
Oh, yeah. This is all combined. Also, you'll notice in 10, 11, there's an additional 12 teachers due to the decline of ADA.
And that is mostly in the secondary.
Yes. Then if we go down, we're still in section B, line 10, you'll see a negative 1.1 in nine, 10, and a 1.1 in 10, 11. This is what we came up with in the respect of next year, when we lose like 20 percent. Between this year and next year, we lose 20 percent, roughly 20 percent of our categorical funding in some of our states. What we decided to do was leave 70 percent of those, the ones that can be flexed, we'll leave 70 percent in there for site use, and then we'll sweep 30 percent. That, that's equates to the 30 percent. It's an estimate.
Which line is that?
That is line 10 in section B.
And actually, if you go to page 33, there's a table that shows that. And what that shows is the tier-three categoricals, the ones that we have flexibility capability, and it shows the deficits in each of the respective years that Meg's talking about, and then the residual 30 percent that we're planning to move from the restricted to unrestricted side. So that's all, that's also already factored in before we talk about anything.
So again, we just use it as a placeholder to cut the expenditures down, because we will be taking it from the restricted side and putting it into the unrestricted side. So we just offset it by in the expenditures, just as a placeholder. Now, I'd like to point out, as Eric has already done, and especially in the table, is the net increase-decrease in fund balance. As you can see, we have, we are not deficit in the, we do not have an operating deficit in nine, 10. However, when you look at 10, 11, we go to 4.4 million deficit spending. That's a 4.9 million dollar swing from one year to a next.
And that's reflected on page 107.
Yes.
107, if you look at C, net increase or decrease, and it's what we talked about, we have that plug there in nine, 10. And so then basically, if we don't get ahead of the operating deficit going into nine, 10, it manifests itself with a huge deficit in 10, 11. Not as huge as the numbers we saw last year, but.
Yeah, if you, we didn't have that $2 million sweep, we would definitely be negative there. So at this point, I'd like to just go on to page 111, which is restricted and unrestricted.
Are you going to continue on this page and point out the reserves?
Yeah.
Well, that's going to be on the, that's going to be the next.
Page 111.
It shows on page 111, 111, 112.
That's the one we're going to really use for discussion purposes.
So the only thing I want to really point out is that this letter C, the net increase-decrease, this, it went from a positive 800,000 to a negative 2, 2.3 million. And that's because we are spending down all our restricted funds, as you saw in the graph on the prior pages. Again, we, 10, 11, we're saying we have no restricted ending fund balance, and so you see the 4, the 4 million negative deficit spending. I'd like to also point out that in section D, the very last line, we go from in the projected year, which is 08, 09, 12.9 to 6.45 in reserves. That's a 50 percent decrease. And if you remember, in first interim, we had about the same. I think it was 52 percent last, at first interim, from eight, nine to 10, 11. So even though things have changed, we've done good things to hold back some of the, with the freezing spend, the freezing of the spending, and that was good. On the next page, on page 112, we get to our reserve amount, and as Eric said, that we're required to have a 6 percent reserve.
3 percent.
I mean, I'm sorry, 3 percent reserve. I'd like a 6. I'd like to 6 percent reserve, three in each district, but in eight, nine, we have a 7.61 percent reserve, nine, 10, 7.19, 10, 11, a 3.83 reserve. That means, to me, either both districts do not have a 3 percent, or one of the two districts does not have a 3 percent reserve. And that worries me, but.
And I think a good point is 9, 10 has a significant reserve because of one-time adjustments through craftsmanship, rather than reducing expenditures, you know, commensurate with income. So anyways, when you, when you flip back and look at 9, 10, you know, and still realizing some of that is restricted, but we still got that operating deficit emerged, I think, I think it's going to be about $3 million. That's going to be the target.
That, that will be our target in budget cutting in April.
Because that'll put you in a position in 10, 11, a fairly strong position.
Yes, but before we go to the questions, can I just ask, obviously, we're running very late, but very briefly, can you talk about federal stimulus money and what that might mean? Do you have any specific numbers at this point?
Well, hey, Jane, can I have my paper back?
I think we'll believe it when we see it, right?
Well, we're hearing that, you know, the Title I and IDEA, some of that's going to flow in March, and then some of it's in July. But as we've said before, the Title I dollars won't help us. The IDEA, we have to get some kind of assurance they're going to flow through the state, through the SLPA. And at this point, we don't have any better estimates, you know, than we had before. But this is, this is an interesting thing. On the DOE, the federal DOE's guidance, here's what they're, here's what they ask schools to abide by as far as principles for spending stimulus funds. Spend the funds quickly to save and create jobs. Use the money to improve student achievement by establishing rigorous academic standards and assessments, implementing student data systems, improving teacher effectiveness, and providing support for low-performing schools. Account for how the funds are used. Invest the one-time funds wisely.
Okay.
So I think we need to be, you know, circumspect about how we're going to use those dollars if they, if we have latitude to use them to help our budgetary situation.
All right, Mrs. Deacon?
I have a quick question about the reserves. That money resides in the county fund, is that correct? What kind of interest are we earning in that?
3.8 percent in the last quarter.
Okay, all right.
Wow, I'm impressed that you know that.
Other questions or comments from board members? All right, we need a motion to.
And I should say, because of the board taking the actions they did last year, we're in much better place than a lot of districts, because you can see at 3 percent, and it's 3.7 million, if we were right at 3 percent, like a lot of districts are, the amount of, just the mid-year cuts, puts your back against the wall, you know? And so, and we'll just keep doing what we're doing, you know? I think we're on the right path. It's, you know, we're going to have to make some significant decisions in April, but we're working on the plan right now.
Thank you. All right, we need a motion to approve the positive certification.
I move that we.
Do we have comment on E3?
Oh, I guess not. No, we don't.
I move that we approve the positive certification of the 2008, 2009 second interim financial report.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
And I just wanted to thank Meg and her staff and my assistant Alma for all their work. It's not easy putting this thing together, so.
All right, we're moving on to E4, the approval of reduction in particular kinds of services and adoption of resolution numbers, sorry, resolution number 08, 09-28.
And Dr. Robertson will present this.
Education Code, section 44949 and 44955 permit the Board of Education to reduce or discontinue particular kinds of services. Given our budget concerns, it's necessary to reduce or discontinue the following kinds of services of the district no later than the beginning of the 09, 10 school year. As a result, it will be necessary to terminate at the end of the 2008, 09 school year the employment of certain certificated employees of the districts as a result of the elimination of the particular kinds of services. Employees who first rendered paid service to the district, or among the employees who first rendered paid service to the district on the same day, the order of termination will be based solely on the needs of the district and the students themselves. The particular kind of services are listed in your attachment on the resolution, and it encompasses 41 FTEs at the elementary school level, and 10.5 FTEs from child development, Spanish, French, social science, health, PE, math, science, ESL, music, art, and theater, and English, and then an additional seven FTEs for English, and additional three for counseling. It's approximately 64 FTEs that we would need to notice. I also heard late today that potentially, child development may be facing another major cut in one of their programs, and that may or may not be impacted here, but we have included FTEs for them just in case, and may have some attrition that will help take care of that. But the second thing on this is that we also have had to protect certain programs, because they require special kinds of qualifications needed to run these programs, and that is all special education programs, La Cuesta continuation, elementary library trainer, the head teachers and directors of child development program, administrative designee at OAS, automotive shop, and engineering academy. Employees affected by the layoff will be noticed by 3:15, and Ann Peake and I will be going out personally and delivering these letters and talking to the staff who may be affected by this over the next three days. It is recommended that the Board of Education take action to reduce the number of particular kinds of services as required by ED Code and adopt resolution number 08, 09-28.
Dr. Robertson, if I could add, and maybe you can correct me, I think it's important to indicate the reasons for, for these layoffs and not other layoffs, and why so many. We have a number. We have a number of factors. One is declining enrollment. That's one of the factors. Another is the decision that we made on inter-district transfer students at the elementary level. That's another factor. There are a number of others that have to do with the Tier III flexibility, which was a provision of the state budget. Those may be enacted, they may not. We'll be discussing them in April. There may be other cuts made in April that we've had to anticipate. And once those cuts are known and made, we still won't know what happens with the state propositions in May. And we do need to prepare for that as well. And whether we two-tier that and say, well, these are the cuts, and if the state comes back to us and says, oh, and, and we don't have, you know, another $11 billion, which is really what's riding on these propositions in May, then we'll need to either further those actions or we'll need to get ahead of them and prepare. Because the state may go back into their whole budget process that we've experienced in the past and may make some other judgments this summer. Did I miss some of the important factors?
No, you've covered most of it. Basically, the loss of funding, especially like child development preschool programs. There's elementary assumptions, which include 181 students, possible exclusion of K3 and raising class size up to 27 to 1 for K6. And then ninth grade class size reduction would be impacted in terms of no extra monies, AB 1802 monies could be swept. We have 10.5 FTEs are based just strictly on the decline in enrollment. And when you look at those kinds of services that need to be reduced, it's a percentage based on that decline in enrollment. So it's 3.03% decline in each subject area. So that is why you get a .2 here and a .6 here. And they total up 10.5 total FTEs. And that's just based on decline in enrollment. There's a number of assumptions and projections that do need to come into play here. And as Brian said, over the next couple of months, we'll be taking a look at where we're going to need to go from there. And certainly will hopefully allow us to make adjustments and not have to make these drastic cuts.
All right, board comments? Okay, we'll take public comment first, and then we'll have our own questions. So Dr. Robertson, don't go very far.
Lane Wheeler, followed by David Holmes.
Thank you very much, Lane Wheeler. On behalf of Santa Barbara Teachers Association, riffs and layoffs hurt district goals and undermine morale and impede the delivery of service. The cuts that appear before you are mandated by law, but SBTA beseeches all of you to act just as quickly to restore positions as soon as funds become available. As stimulus dollars, excuse me, as it stands right now, class size reduction, ninth grade class size reduction in English and math, 1802 counseling services are just some of the examples of programs that are being cut. And this is, not only hurts students and families, but it also hurts the certificated employees that deliver these services. As I said, as soon as federal money and parcel tax money becomes available, we would encourage you to replace those folks as quickly as we can. Because it, it's not just a matter of changing, saving a dollar here. It's changing your program, it's changing delivery service, and it's impacting individuals in our community's lives and, and in a very harmful, hurtful way. I know this is not done from a malicious standpoint, but we need to be as cognizant as we can that our educational dollars need to be stretched as far as possible. I think we've had an excellent presentation by Mr. Smith that puts us in a very sound financial footing. But we need to look very carefully at how we can keep our staff as healthy and whole as possible so that our students and families can benefit as much as possible from that. I'd like to thank Dr. Robertson for the good job she's done in, in bringing this forward. And we'll be out in the schools the next three days also ministering to the needs and concerns of our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. And Mr. Holmes?
Good evening. David Holmes, San Marcos High School Performing Arts Department Chair. Earlier this evening, a parent addressed the board and pretty passionate about the loss of a specific teacher. And that parent understands something that I, I try to communicate most of the times that I come before the board. And that is that the success of the program is determined by the skills of that credentialed teacher. And here we are looking at some pretty, pretty serious cuts in our teacher ranks. And in the area of, in particular, in the area of theater, band, and vocal music, those are designated as, as services that are determined somehow, those, those must be cut. I'm not sure how that's determined. I'm not sure how you can say that one program is savable and another program is expendable, i.e., auto shop. Great programs, I'm sure, absolutely fantastic. Only as good as the teacher that's in there teaching. You know, when you, when you do that, compare, you know, one, it's a pretty tough sell for me to go back to my colleagues, you know, and say, this area is spared, this area is not. So my appeal to the board is to consider making some of these really truly exceptional programs that take really skilled people in them, theater, band, vocal music, and making them safe, pulling them off of this, this cut list. It would do a lot to help the morale of my colleagues, young teachers who are trying to get their, really, their feet in the door and trying to build something here in Santa Barbara, especially in our junior highs, who are being laid off. Demoralizing, deflating, defeating, you know, and they're working really hard. So if you could consider that, I'd appreciate it. And at least hear that when you make distinctions and you compare one program to another, it's a tough sell out there on the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
More comments? Mrs. Deacon?
I had just a couple of quick questions. First of all, Dr. Robertson, I want you to know, I think we all know it's as hard on you to do this as it is on us. A couple of questions about, say, for instance, art and band, where we see .6 FTE, .4 FTE. Are these spread out over multiple schools? I mean, we don't want to wipe out one program, I want anyone's school.
It's not necessarily designated a particular school at this point in time, it's just a, a 3% reduction in every subject matter area. So it, it just takes into account all the FTEs for that subject matter area.
I'd like to emphasize that as well. I know you have another question. But, but when we take a look at an enrollment decline, it really cuts across all schools, the entire population. And you don't simply eliminate a section of English and a section of science and PE. It does affect all of the subject areas. So we try to be equitable about that.
Go ahead.
My other questions, first of all, had to do with elementary. We see 41 FTE here. I guess we were all hoping after the hard decision we made at the last board, meaning that, that we wouldn't be losing nearly so many elementary teachers. Is this, this is class size reduction is what we're looking at here? That's what that's translating into?
It's class size reduction and potentially what may happen there. And I have to, I have to plan for the worst and hope for the best.
And just the, the last point I wanted to make was, I know with the, the parcel tax, you know, one of the, the prime selling points of that was that we were going to be able to reduce ninth grade math classes. And I think that's in the language for, for Measure H. And here, we're looking at turning around and increasing ninth grade English. You know, it's just kind of Peter for Paul kind of situation, you know? And it's, it's kind of hard.
It is, and I don't really know how to project what's going to happen as far as parcel tax and, and what we're going to be able to do with that. And certainly, that will factor into all of this. But it is, it does sound a little convoluted, but it's, it's just the process we need to go through to figure this out. And equitably, as Brian said, is across the board to take a look at it. Whether that all comes to fruition will really depend upon the hard decisions that you're going to be needing to make the next couple of months.
Thank you. Other board comments? Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I'm always concerned that we have, and, well, I'm always concerned that we have to operate on the worst-case scenario. Given that it's unlikely that what we're identifying as the worst-case scenario is what's actually going to occur. For example, we are going to have some, um, parcel tax funds that we are going to be able to use somehow. We don't know yet where that's going to be. But we do know they're going to be there, and we are going to get to use them. And so I just wonder if there's any way to scale back how much we're cutting. I, I look at English cutting almost nine FTE. And I'm thinking a core program like that, when we're constantly concerned about, you know, our test scores, et cetera, this makes me worry. And so, you know, I don't, I don't know. I guess I'm, I'm wondering if we can scale it back or if pretty much our hands are tied.
Right now, our hands are tied.
We have to do this.
And we have to do this, and then we'll deal with, again, the next couple of months, the decisions that we need to make. And as soon as we can do anything, or we know anything, or things change, we will deal with it immediately. We'll go right into the process of the, the teachers affected by this being able to meet on the 16th with their union representation. We'll look at setting a date for our hearings, getting out information. And by then, hopefully, we'll have been able to whittle down that list that we're looking at and dealing with here and have a better idea of where we're going to go and what we're going to absolutely have to do in, as the bottom line, based on our budget.
Well, thank you, and I do appreciate how difficult this is for you as well.
Ms. Cordero, you did hit on another topic. For instance, in math, there are layoffs here anticipated in math. We know that in the parcel tax that we will bring, be bringing math teachers to the district, those will be temporary positions because the parcel tax is not permanent. Now, if we do pass another parcel tax in four years and we extend that out years, then we can probably make those permanent.
Yes, Mr. Aaron?
But how do we, I forget the word of Prop 8, or parcel tax H. But how do you, can we let math teachers go and then hire? I mean, I thought we were supposed to.
We'll turn right around and offer these people at least temporary positions.
But I thought we were supposed to add to programs and not take away something and then use parcel tax to fill it back in.
Well, if your enrollment drops by a number of students, you do have to scale back. So, and there are other cuts that are yet to be made. I mean, we have to get to $3 million.
Yes, I do think it's important that we emphasize this is, this is preliminary. It's when you do the really, really horrible work in April where it just, then it becomes concrete, that it actually gets worse before it gets better. For some, I mean, it is nice because we know that this is the worst-case scenario, and, and we know that a lot of these teachers, fingers crossed, will be able to come back. So these are, all of the temporary teachers are being noticed. These are, are permanent teachers that are being noticed for these positions.
Yes.
And I, I want to chime in with other board members because I appreciate the work that the SBTA does with the teachers. But what you and Ms. Peake do as you go out, I know that that's got to be very emotional, very difficult for everybody. So thank you, because I know you have a hard road ahead on that. And any other comments or questions on this at this point? I know we're all very sorry. And I want to say thank you for those of you who are still here to hear this. I'm sorry, it is so terribly, terribly late. We had such a full agenda tonight. But thank you for coming. So I do need a motion to approve the reduction in particular kinds of services and adoption of resolution 0809-28.
Well, I know none of us want to make this motion. But I'll save my younger, more recent colleagues from having to do that. I move that we approve the reduction in particular kinds of services and adoption of resolution number 08/09-28.
And I need a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and it passes 4-0. All right, we have two other quick things that we need to get through. And one is E6. So if we could move briefly through board action on student expulsion case numbers, 0809-28, 0809-33, 0809-38, 0809-39, 0809-41, and 0809-42.
Well, I'll start with the motion to accept the recommendation of the administrative hearing panel for case number 08-09-28.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Keep going, Mrs. Deacon?
Okay.
Hit the road.
I move we accept the recommendation of the administrative hearing panel for case 0809-33.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the administrative hearing panel for case 0809-38.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the hearing panel for case 0809-39.
Can, I'm sorry, the last two, these two cases, this one and the previous one, were actually stipulated.
Yeah, the recommendations to accept the stipulation.
So.
We'll put it that way.
Okay.
Specify that, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, the stipulated. I move.
Okay.
We need to vote, there's a second on, this is on 39 that we're on?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we accept the recommendation of the administrative hearing panel for the stipulated one-year expulsion for case 0809-14.
No, -41.
-41.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I move that we accept the recommendation of the hearing panel for the suspended expulsion one calendar year for case 0809-42.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now we need Dr. Robertson back. For item F4, the first reading of tentative agreement language between the Santa Barbara School Districts and the Santa Barbara Teachers Association.
Basically, as you just said, this is the first reading of the tentative language that we have so far agreed upon in negotiations with SBTA and which has been presented to the board. This was the opportunity for the public to be able to take a look at the agreement and look over what the tentative language changes are and make any comments if need be. The areas that we're talking about are Article 6, which covers hours and conditions of Section 1.8, case six instructional planning time, Section 3 instructional minutes for La Cuesta and Community Day School, and a job-sharing language. Article 16, which, Section 1, which has to do with this, is going to be a three-year agreement, as is our practice. And Exhibit C, which is co-curricular activities and increasing the junior high and senior high school coral stipend. This will be brought back to the board for a second reading at the next board meeting. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. I'm recommending, well, there's no recommendations, unrestricted funds. And if anything comes up between now and then, please let me know.
Right, board members? Okay, thank you very much. We will now, obviously, we're skipping F5, F6, returning to the consent items. There were two items that had not been discussed that were polled. They were D4, approval of the amendment of contract with FICMAT, the study agreement dated January 23, 2009, and amended March 2, 2009. And D10, the approval of purchase order report for the period February 18, 2009, through March 3, 2009. Both of those were polled by Dr. Noel. He is absent. Do I hear a motion?
I move we approve D4 and D9, D10, sorry.
I have a question on D4.
Yes.
I'm just curious. Under the amendment to scope of work on page 7, with the bold type, it says the district requests FICMAT to present a preliminary report on the order of the function of the governing board on Tuesday, March 10. Are we paying extra for that?
No, it was, it was only for the additional field time.
It's bolded, but I don't think that that meant that that was a change. They have other bolds. other bolds there.
I'm wondering why it's there when it's also on the top of page 4.
I think that that was a, was that a previous amendment? When we asked for them specifically to come forward?
It was in the original proposal.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious if...
That's not what the cost is.
I don't know. It just, it looks like...
In their explanation, to me, they said they met with board members, they felt that they really needed to do additional field work, participate in additional meetings with additional members of the community, and prepare and present reports, and spend more time in preparing and presenting reports to the board.
If you find it spilling, I'd like to know.
Okay, thank you. Right, there's a motion to approve both of those, D4 and D10. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that passes 4-0 with Dr. Noel absent. And finally, coming events, which we spoke about. Then aye, board comments and correspondence?
There's just so much going on, but I'm going to bypass. I mean, there is so much positive news about our students. It's, we've got winners across the board. I went to the grandparents' thing today, or yesterday. Beautiful. 100 displays of children's little portraits of their grandparents. Beautiful.
Fantastic. Future agenda items, the one thing that came up was talking about the Santa Barbara High School Bridge Program. Anything else that people want to add here?
In some manner, I'm not sure whether the board read, but we had a lot of parent unrest at Washington School two weeks ago, and now there's nothing. So I'm just curious how that went, or is going, or what's happening.
Well, maybe we can...
I don't know what the board...
Maybe we can get, maybe we can get in the board brief, an update on the status of that at Washington, and also, I know some time ago, there was concern about the erosion at Roosevelt, and so I'm wondering if there's any further information on that as well.
All right, we can get that in a board brief, too. With that, we have come to the end of our agenda. It is so late, I can barely articulate, and with no further objection, this meeting is adjourned.